The October 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Dexter Township Planning Commission will now please come to order. Just by way of introduction, the planning commissioners, I'm Marty Straub. To my left, your right, Chandler Hurd, Gretchen Criscle, Steve Birch, Tom Lewis, Alicia Abbott, and Kristi Mayer. We have a quorum. In fact, we are at full strength tonight. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Any member of the Planning Commission have a conflict of interest with any of our agenda items this evening? Seeing none, next item approval of the agenda. Anybody have any additions, subtractions, alterations? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved as submitted. This brings us to our first public comment period. We prefer that it's for items that are not on the agenda, the two public hearing items. We'll get into those and open it up for public comment in just a couple of minutes. But if anyone has anything else that they would like to address us about, please step up to the microphone to make sure it's turned on and give your name and address for the record. Anybody? And there'll be another opportunity toward the end of the meeting. So, hearing none, public comment was open and closed at 6:02 PM. That brings us to public hearings, the first of which is, public hearing to amend relevant portions of Section 2.02R in Article 4, Article 7, Article 17 of the zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals in the Lake Residential Zoning District using the short-term rental development standards in the Hamburg Township zoning ordinance. We have staff presentation, please.
Good evening. My name is Megan Masson-Minock. I'm the planning consultant for the township and the acting Department of Planning and Zoning Director. On August 13th, 2004, Amy and Jep Bennett, who are the property owners at 8980 Dexter Pinckney Road, submitted an application to Dexter Township requesting that the township amend the zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals. In emails and conversations with the applicant, they amended the application to ask for short-term rentals being allowed in the Lake Residential District only and to use the short-term rental regulations in Hamburg Township. As detailed in their application, and I'm sure they'll have a chance to present, they purchased 8980 Dexter Pinckney Road under the assumption that the short-term rental use of the property could continue. After their purchase, a code enforcement violation was filed with the township. The township has a longstanding policy that short-term rentals are not allowed unless they're operated and spend breakfast, and that's a special land use in the agricultural, rural residential, lake residential, and the resource conservation districts. The applicant chose to file this zoning ordinance amendment, and just so the public knows and the planning commission knows, that's a bit different than the zoning ordinance amendments that have been initiated by the township, that have been coming through the planning commission over the past six months. Many of those had been, there had been consultations with members of the public, there had been a lot of back and forth from the planning commission, you saw multiple drafts. This is the first draft of this that you've seen, and as we put it together as staff, we very much tried to adhere to what was given to us by the applicant. So, just to summarize what's there, is that a short-term rental is defined as a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit that is rented wholly or partially for periods of less than 30 days and for more than 14 days a year. There are four different types of short-term rentals that are proposed. Each of those have some different regulations proposed for them, but there are things that are proposed as rules for all short-term rentals. Accessory dwelling unit onsite, either the accessory dwelling unit or the house may be used as a short-term rental, not both. There's a maximum occupancy proposed, two bedrooms per bed, two persons through bedroom and two additional persons for floor with livable space. One off-street parking space is required per bedroom. I will note that's the same regulation. Fireworks, no tents, recreation vehicles or boats can be used as short-term rentals. On-site garbage service is required. A local agent available 24 hours who lives within 45 minutes of the short-term rental is required. Advertisements on short-term rental platforms like Airbnb and VRBO must show the permit number and the maximum number of people allowed. Within 1,000 feet of a proposed short-term rental, there's no more than 30% of the properties may be short-term rentals, and that percent, of that percentage, no more than 15% may be primary or bed and breakfast rentals. And those primary and bed and breakfast rentals are essentially short-term rentals year-round. That can be year-round, not, the accessory ones are for a shorter period of time in terms of the number of days per year. And those are given out on a first-come, first-served basis. There's requirements for information that has to be posted inside an unhosted unit so when the property owner is not onsite, when the guests come, including the name and phone number of the local agent, plan showing property lines, statement on trespassing and adjacent properties, information on garbage pickup, maximum number of people, quiet hours, and restrictions on fireworks, and that a major zoning permit is required. As I stated, there are four types that, of short-term rentals that are in Hamburg Township's zoning ordinance and that were in the proposed amendments. One is accessory, and that's rented less than 122 days a year. That's proposed as a permitted use in Lake Residential. A maximum occupancy of 10 people per the dwelling unit, including the host and their family, 14 if in an ADU. The short-term rental structures have to meet the zoning setbacks with an exception for legal non-conforming structures and temporary structures and uses not allowed, temporary structures and uses are not allowed when used as a short-term rental. So, there is also a hosted, which is defined as occupied by a permanent resident, by the permanent resident when the unit is leased or rented. If it's accessory or primary, it's permitted in the, in the Lake Residential, and if it's a bed and breakfast, it would be proposed as a special land use in the agricultural, rural residential, lake residential, and rural resource conservation. And the regulations for accessory, primary, bed and breakfast, those are applied depending on what type they are. A bed and breakfast has a permanent resident as the manager, and it's rented up to 365 days per year. It's a special land use, as I said, in AGRR, LR, and RC. There are a number of rules with this. I won't go through them all right now unless Mr. Cherry feel that it's necessary.
I don't think it is at this point, but some of those will undoubtedly come up in our deliberations.
Yes. And I just want to stress, these are the regulations that are in Hamburg Township. They are not the regulations that are currently for bed and breakfasts in your, the Dexter Township zoning ordinance, so keep that in mind. For a primary, that, short-term rental, excuse me, that is something that is rented up to 365 days per year. That's proposed as a permitted use in the LR, in the Lake Residential. A maximum occupancy of 10 people per unit, including the host and their family if in the same building, 14 if in ADU. Short-term rental structures have to meet those setbacks, and then temporary structures and uses are not allowed during the short-term rental. We did some research prior to this at the request of the township supervisor in terms of what are the number of short-term rentals in Dexter Township, because while the zoning ordinance does not permit them, we definitely heard stories that there were active short-term rentals, and how do you deal with that? We used a service called, a service called AirDNA. What they do is they scrape the data from all these different short-term rental platforms, and they mostly sell their services to people who run short-term rentals or convention and visitor bureaus. But they had a free option, and we could look at the geography of Dexter Township, and at that time in July 2024, there were 20 to 30 short-term rentals in Dexter Township, and what that meant by the dot in the mat is that they had been rented within the past year, so July 2023 to July 2024, according to their data. And when you look at that screenshot of that map, some of it is on Lake Residential, some of the short-term rentals are in Lake Residential properties that are zone Lake Residential, but others are in rural residential. Just so the public knows and the planning commission knows, you can take one of four actions really tonight. You can make a favorable recommendation. That favorable recommendation comes in two ways. You can make a favorable recommendation of the amendments as they're proposed, and that goes to the township board. The township board decides this matter. You can make a favorable recommendation with changes. So let's say that there are some things that the planning commission feels that Hamburg has in their township, in their regulations for short-term rentals, that you feel are inappropriate or not feasible for Dexter Township. You could say those need to be eliminated, and in the motions that we've written out for you, there's space to write those if you need to take notes or look at them. You can also make an unfavorable recommendation to the township board. You can also table or delay action, and in that case, you should look at, in that case, it should be because the zoning tax amendment application doesn't contain enough information, additional information is necessary, or significant changes are necessary to review approval. I just want to note two more things, and then, one is that there's standards that are, the decision criteria for a zoning tax amendment per Section 3005B of the Dexter Township zoning ordinance. One is that the master plan, the zoning tax amendment shall be compatible with the goals, policies, and future land use of the master plan. And two, the zoning tax amendment shall be consistent with state and federal law. We wanted to note two specific things for you in that manner. Number one, Item 6 of the zoning plan and Page 69 of the 2023 Dexter Township Master Plan states that the township should consider amending the accessory dwelling standard, Section 1702D, in the zoning ordinance to prohibit the use of ADUs or SDRs, which is short-term rentals. So, the Hamburg Township ones allow, that are before you as a proposal, allow ADUs to be used as a short-term rental. So that's in conflict with the master plan. So, that would either need to be something, if you were going to comply with the master plan, that would need to be removed from these, or you could possibly cite that as a reason to recommend denial. Also, in terms of state or federal laws that specifically regulate short-term rentals, if anybody has ever followed this, there is a buzz and always a flurry of short-term rental legislation in the Michigan Legislature, and there have not been anything that has been adopted, you know, on the federal level. However, in our review, we note Hill, House Bill Number 5438 of 2024, that was introduced into the House of Representatives of February this year. The bill allows municipalities to create zoning regulations for short-term rentals, set some minimal rules, and a proposed statewide excise tax. However, that bill right now remains in local government and municipal finance committee, and it's unlike some other bills that have been in the House where it states that the municipality must allow short-term rentals. Some bills have been in the legislature before where it was mandating that are taking away that local control from, from the municipalities. So, we would be happy to answer any questions if you have any, or as we go through the evening.
Thank you. Any planning commissioner have questions for staff at this point? At this time, it would be appropriate if the applicant has anything to tell the planning commission.
Hello. So, at the property document that I sent in, did they already all have that?
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't had a chance to review it or not, but, okay. Anyway, so my name is Amy Bennett, and I'm here today to request an amendment to the current ordinance to allow for short-term rentals. My husband and I recently purchased a home on Portage Lake where we were told that the short-term rentals were allowed as the previous homeowner has rented it out for four and a half years with no issues at all. Short-term rentals bring significant benefit to the local economy, driving revenue to both restaurants and stores. We recently spoke to the owner of the Naughty Mall on the River where she expressed how much business she receives from vacationers who mentioned that they are staying at a local Airbnb. My husband and I are committed to being responsible and attentive to other property owners as well. We have an excellent record with other properties as well that we rent out in the southeast area of Michigan. We also currently live on Zuki Lake in Hamburg Township, and we are close enough to deal with any issues that should arise. We plan to also install outside security cameras to make sure that our guests will be complying, complying to the house rules if the current ordinance is amended. Thank you for taking the time to review our petition, and we would be, be beyond grateful for the amendment allowing short-term rentals to be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any planning commissioner have any questions for the applicant at this point? And we'll, go ahead.
So, according to your application, your primary residence is in Pinckney, and so is this a second home that was originally purchased as an investment property?
So, so I live, my primary residence is in Pinckney on Portage Lake, but we have three other homes currently. This home was just purchased in June. I, I've been looking for about six months, and then when I seen, I've seen the ad actually on Facebook, and when I called the realtor, it says specifically in the MLS listing whether you're looking to purchase this or as a vacation home, or if you're looking to seek lucrative income for a short-term investment. So, when I called the realtor, I said, can you, so for 100%, I can short-term rent this home, Airbnb, VRBO, so yes, we've been doing it for the last four and a half years. We made an offer that night. So, we bought the home and started doing some, oh, I know what happened. We had a pretty large incident with the neighbors right next door when we went there on the Fourth of July. We were basically verbally attacked, that we are not allowed to rent this home out, and it was a nightmare. So, after the Fourth of July, I called the township to find out, like, this was rented out for four and a half years. I just spent just under half a million dollars on this property that I, I don't have anything to do with other than rent out. I don't need this home. And they said, well, there is no, there is, there is no current ordinance that you can or you can't, therefore you can't. And also, a permit was not a hold for the last four and a half years. And I said, well, I never thought to call about a permit because they told us that they were doing this, and after four and a half years, you would think that the neighbor in your store would have called the township at least once if he had all these issues with this, this happening. He knew this was happening, they never called once. We had one renter, and they called about a dog. So, they, the people that were short-term renting for four and a half years, they always allowed dogs. So, so anyways, this was solely what this was bought for. So, now, I'm stuck. If I cannot short-term rent it, I already have plans to redo the whole inside and change it, and I don't want to sell the home because I think that's an excellent opportunity for vacationers and also for the local businesses here in Dexter Township. I travel probably eight times a year, and almost all of them, all over the country, is renting through the RV or Airbnb. It's, it's a fabulous opportunity when you have large people, like a large group, five, six people or whatever, a family of four, to stay. It's so much better than staying in a hotel room, in my opinion. And, and it's a huge platform, a lot of people enjoy it, it works well. It's just about being responsible, and that's what we, I know how to use Airbnb, and I would expect that if I had, well, I'm doing the Airbnb, that it would be ran the same way, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions of the applicant?
So, I do.
Go ahead.
So, you're saying that the house was being rented actively as an Airbnb or a short-term rental?
Right.
And that you had one tenant?
Right next door.
You, you had one tenant, and then that somehow upset the neighbor, but the neighbor didn't have any problems for four years?
Yeah. To my knowledge, the township wasn't called One Tenet.
So, was the tenant that you? I was curious how, after four years?
After the, the one tenant, we changed the VRBO listing that there's no, have the risk of any other issues happening. I was called again to find out what's going on because we're still. Us can be 10, or until Labor Day, whatever, and to have them cancel. upsetting to them. So, they were nice enough to allow us, but they, to address it then, but I'm not sure what the, I think the reason. So. But we did just purchase the home and close on it June. So, there was just that handful left, but the neighbor.
Thank you. Typical, when the planning. Amendments, it's something that is. From zoning board of appeals or something that. But the applicant tonight. We will reserve the opportunity to. We will open the public hearing to amend everything I said before for the. That anyone who wants to speak, please come. Would limit your comments to five minutes per hour planning commission. Is acceptable and appreciated. Through the same thing.
Make sure the green button is pushed. There's, there's a button, you push it. Oh, that's what's hidden. Can you hear me now?
I could hear you before.
970 Dexter Pinckney Road, which is next door to the property that their petition. To just address Amy's. You have years prior with no problems, that is. The owner of the Airbnb. He leased that house, and he was a very. People following the rules. He actually, we had one weekend where there was a bachelorette party or bachelor party there, and it was just totally obnoxious, and the owner. He ended up kicking the people out because it was so. We couldn't, we couldn't even. Where I'm standing to the telephone. It's like a bed and breakfast type situation. I called the township, basically. Passed an ordinance that they just allowed. So, I called the township, I called Megan. And she said, no, she said, we don't. And I said, oh, it was new. Call. It was the, the local paper that had. Amendment that they. The reason why I am concerned and why. Number one, safety, the safety. We've had multiple people there that come every couple days. I have a grandson, and I have people. No idea who they are, are they criminals, are they pedophiles? My family's safe anymore there. We had that incident, and. So, that's my major. Missing from our shed, from our property. Time we leave, we have to lock everything up. It's, it's a safe community. I used to be able to leave my. My boat and my raft on my. Because they allow people to bring in the boats and dock them. Somebody did damage the motor on my boat. You know, these people next door, they have, they have, they have no interest in the beauty. They're just here transiently, you know, for a few days here and there. So, that's. Also, we've come to the house, there have been renters on my dock because they have no idea. My dock, which poses a liability. Want that liability, you know, it's, it could cost me. Also, we've had, well, when I was talking about. Oh, how do they even know the rules? Now, the influx of people. We've had it where, and it's mainly dogs, but it was a pit bull. The people who rented the, that, it was the, the Hell Township, or the Putten Township, notice that I saw in the paper, but then also the people that came, they had, and I felt bad for them, they had, their mother was ill, and so they were having, you know, kind of like a family reunion next door. Well, first of all, they had, all had dogs, and two of them were pit bulls. So, my youngest son was bit by a pit bull when he was five years old, souffled his tongue in the middle, the, the, the dogs, I too, went along his orbital, orbital bones, I'm sorry.
He's in charge.
Oh, orbital bone, and basically, so, so these dogs are on leashes, and they're migrating into my property where we're sitting on our dock. So, and they're defecating in my yard, these people have no regard for, you know, any property lines or, or anything, because they come and they go. It's not like if we have somebody, you know, next door who, who has a dog, or the neighbor has two dogs, and he's very, very conscientious about the dogs. He keeps them on leashes and he keeps them contained, we don't have any problems.
Excuse me, just a moment, is something tracking, where are we on time?
About five and a half minutes.
All right.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes, either, either that or after everyone who wants, you know, feel free to take another, another run at it.
Yeah, the last, the last thing is, is that it's just, the reason we're having this conversation also is for safety reasons, is that there is no place to park in that, where this particular Airbnb is. There's a road that, that the residents have been parking on, and they put three to seven cars there, and it blocks the road. My next-door neighbor is elderly, she's 90, and there's no way for EMS vehicles to get in if, if they needed to. Evidence that live around this Airbnb and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll be very quick. Hi guys.
Could we get your, uh, excuse me, your.
I live right over here at twenty-three fifty-seven here on River Drive. Step up here because, um, well, for two reasons. Going back and forth on, you're talking about homes that are on lake. Um, I would also just want to add that. I would hope that you guys would consider homes that were ruled that where there were no neighbors involved with those homes. I don't know. Front versus somewhere that's rural and private. Get out there so that y'all would consider that because I'm not in a neighborhood, I'm all by myself. Secondly, I just wanted to say I actually do have an Airbnb that we've rented for years in Linden Township on Long Lake. And our experience as Airbnb people is completely different than the young woman that just spoke. We've had the kindest, most wonderful guests for years. We have a book filled with everybody's comments to us. We've had people leave us all kinds of nice things. We've made friendships. And we also allow dogs. I've never had poop left in my yard. I have never had a bad experience with anyone's dogs and I simply just communicate with them over the Airbnb platform. I tell them what's expected and I've never had anyone break those rules. Everybody has been wonderful. So, uh, also with the boat, we, we rent a boat as well. I've also never had any problems. We, we send a video to everybody that rings with us. Full instructions as well as a waiver and that covers our liability and everything with our boat. And we've also never had any problems on the lake with, with boating at all. And, um, the last thing that I'll say is that when we bought the home, it, it had to be completely renovated. So it was a really bad eyesore in the neighborhood. And, um, I don't have pictures with me, but, um, it got completely renovated to this past six months to do it. And all of my neighbors and everyone are super happy with us, glad that we renovated it and glad that we Airbnb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Weber of ninety-three eighty-one Dexter Paint and Drive in Pinney. I own like a Forties Lake, Little Forties Lake Properties LLC who operate an Airbnb, which I have successfully operated for seven years now without ever getting complaints of any kind. I've had over two hundred and fifty individual stays, much like that fine lady. She, all of my people love me. I have a five-star rated home. It, it, this has allowed me, um, to retire at my retirement age of sixty-five. And I count on that income coming in. I'm going to get that place paid off in another two years and I am really counting on that income becoming in from my retirement. I've done nothing wrong and this would be confiscate, confiscatory if you could tell or if you take it. Also, the house rules that I deal with through VRBO are actually very stringent. And they were, it makes the landlord, it makes it easier for me to act than it would have been had I, had I leased this out long-term like I used to. I owned the home since nineteen ninety-eight. And leased it on a yearly basis up until I was able to fix it up with the help of some wonderful neighbors. It gave me a lot of the furnace, the door walls. I was able to fix up that little place and it looks cute as heck. It's an addition to the neighborhood completely. No one has complained whatsoever. Do you have any questions, Sophie?
We don't, uh, uh, engage in conversation during the public hearing, but we thank you for your comments.
One, one other little thing. Had I still been renting, had I still been renting this by lease when COVID hit, I probably would have lost the place because nobody would have had to pay rent. VRBO actually, I doubled my business during COVID because people were trying to escape. So I've done nothing but improve the neighborhood. All my neighborhoods, all my neighbors love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Dave Withman, ninety-four, ninety-five Shell Beach in Lake District. I also do not short-term rent. Um, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Uh, in, in reviewing, you know, this, uh, hearing, it's, it's clear that the township will have to do something with short-term rentals. And a review would be prudent. We've become a destination. We've become a destination for people going to events in Ann Arbor, for family gatherings, for other, uh, uh, items. And that's, that's good for the community, uh, but changes the nature of our housing and our residents. Short-term rentals aren't new. Um, as you stated, they're twenty to twenty-four. I see a lot of them are around us. And, and, and they're, you know, they fall into three categories. You got full-time residents where it looks like they're making a little extra money on an extra bedroom. You've got summer-only residents who are trying to recoup maybe some of their taxes. And, and then you have these investment properties, which is relatively new. And Realtors advertising that, uh, houses are rental-ready, you know, publicly. So I too was unaware that the zoning prohibited it because it's been going on for quite some time. But I don't think the simple approach of adopting another township's, uh, rules is the way to go. And certainly not a subset of another township's activity around, uh, short-term rentals, which is what has been proposed. Does not include the other operational requirements that are needed to have a good township program. For example, I mean, your safety, um, our townships unique, forty-foot lots are not uncommon. And we all know what happened on the west side of the lake a few years ago with fire. Didn't just affect the property that had the fire. It burned three or four houses down, right? We were lucky no one was hurt, but would a temporary resident be protected, um, using the Hamburg Township rules in an unfamiliar place? Probably would be questionable. The proposed language, um, also does not, uh, provide for any, um, mechanism for the township to oversee, um, these rules. Are we going to do safety inspections annually? What are we going to charge? How are we going to fund it? Um, the funding mechanisms are not in place. So the proposal is short of a full program for rentals. Whether you like it or not, um, whether we think that we can prohibit it or not. Um, a program needs to be fully comprehensive in order to be operational within the township. Lastly, if you look around many townships, um, with substantial fees on annual permitting, annual inspections for safety. Uh, they do this for the protection of not only the tenants, but also the residents. And that also is missing in the proposal. Lastly, um, if we're looking at doing this, which many townships have done, which we've backed into because we have twenty, twenty-four properties already doing short-term rentals. We can look at the destination view of the township as an opportunity. Imagine if we could use some of that money that's coming into the township through some kind of tax, resort tax, resort fee. And plug it back into some of the initiatives of the township, like green spaces, other things that provide the quality of life that we have all valued and want to value. Whether we do short-term rentals or not and whether we do it just in the Lake District or the whole township, I think, uh, uh, becomes more legal question. But, uh, but in summary, I think just taking a subset of Hamburg Township's, a submission of a subset of Hamburg Township's rules is, is kind of, uh, a shortcut that we don't want to take as a township. And a working group to really look at this and make a true recommendation based on uniqueness of the township would be wise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Brent, that's ninety-eight hundred Toma Road. Um, just a couple of things, uh, again, regardless of whether people are for or against. Uh, does the township currently have an enforcement officer to be able to even look into all of the issues that have been brought up tonight? It would be nice to have somebody that was, you know, full-time to be able to take care of this and, you know, putting that ahead of saying, oh yeah, we're going to allow this, but we have no way to enforce it. Um, and with that being said, uh, I know the first person that was up, they, they had said that they were doing short-term rentals and that they, they were told that they were allowed to finish out their twenty, was it? Sorry, I didn't catch. Was it twenty? That you were able to finish out the year?
No, it's maybe ten or twelve.
Ten, ten or twelve to finish out the year? I'm just curious if that ever came to the board of trustees or who gave them permission to be able to do that because it's against everything that's in the master plan and the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure who had the oversight to be able to do that. That's all.
Thank you. Next.
Alrighty. Uh, thank you first and foremost. I appreciate everyone's time here tonight. Uh, Luke Adams, one four three nine two Edge Water Drive. Um, I own several parcels in Dexter Township and it's all about the revenue, right? It's about tax revenue. It's about this baby back here trying to make some money off her property. She's making improvements on her property like so many other people are making improvements. There's a lot of light. Um, should we have short-term rentals? It's hard to say. I feel that we should go ahead and certainly have rules and regulations in place, but mark my words, as soon as we go ahead and start telling people what they can and cannot do with their property. This is no longer a freeze assignment, all right? We, and if we are going to go ahead and tell people what they can do with their property, whether it's a short-term rental or a full-time rental, whatever the case may be. Um, it should be equally across the entire township. So if I live on North Territorial, I'm in Copper Meadows, wherever the case is, everybody should live under the same rules and regulations. Should not go ahead and say, well, this lake area will be here, whether it be on the Huron River, whether it's on Portage, whether it's on Line, whether it's on Half Moon, whatever the case is. That rule should be the rule of law, hundred percent. Everybody is, is binds to it. I had, um, a gentleman that hit my dock. I didn't assume that he was already a guy doing a short-term rental. He just was going on the lake. I didn't know if he knew the, the laws and rules of, of being on the water. I'm assuming that we have people out there that are policing them. We have the sheriff on the water. We have fish and wild, we have a DNR. Those are the law enforcement folks out there that should be policing the people on the water. Um, as far as dogs, as far as, as actual people in rules in a, in a short terminal, absolutely there should be rules. Absolutely, we should have some form of process procedure here in Dexter Township. It's revenue for the township because that's where all, we're based on revenue and you're all property owners here. We're all, we all pay taxes. And there's a premium here to live in Dexter Township. I'm telling you right now, there's a premium. So we pay that premium. We try to make sure that what we're doing is what's best for the resource, what's best for our community, what's best for our neighbors. Uh, but for someone to come back and say, no, you can't do it with your, your, the property you just purchased, I disagree with. I feel that we have, we have plenty of legislation here that we can go ahead and act. And like the gentleman before me mentioned, we should have somebody. Absolutely, we should have somebody that goes out and, and looks at our property and says, hey, if we're doing this, if this is short-term rental, there's a permit fee. There's a process. It's been followed. All right, now this person here, we're going to go out and make sure that all the rules and regulations are, are followed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Chris Tojek, resident, uh, North Lake Road. I guess I just want to say as a resident living in the lake residential area firmly opposed to commercial use in that area. I mean, the, the whole purpose of being in that area is the residential community, the privacy, the lake use. We do have, uh, property down the road already that is abusing the limits and is used as a rental property. They do use boats when they have overflow. They, uh, park their vehicles at the public boat launch as far as, uh, you know, overuse in the property. And so I guess I'll echo a comment made earlier about enforcing. The concern is no matter where we draw the line, there will be parties that step over that line. How will any new rules or zoning amendments be enforced to protect the rights of residents? And I understand there are property owners that want to profit, but these are not commercial areas, the residential areas. So I just want to emphasize this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say just one more thing just real quick?
Step right up.
Yeah, just, I just want to say Airbnb really manages this for, a lot of these issues that you guys are having, Airbnb manages this for me. I answer, they, they, there's a whole protocol we go through to make sure that, that, you know, we're checking on these people that are about to come and stay at our houses to make sure that our neighbors are safe. We have ring cameras. There's a whole slew of things legally that we're bound to through the Airbnb and the board loan and booking.com. So, um, maybe for those of you that feel uncomfortable with this, just look into that a little bit because a lot of it really isn't even legal without doing what Airbnb tells us we need to do.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, uh, my name is Hazel Bloom and I'm actually attending this meeting on behalf of my parents. I've been reading a letter that my mom wrote, who's a resident at thirteen eight forty-five Sour Drive. My name is Cynthia Bloom and I'm making a public comment in response to agenda item, agenda item six A that seeks to amend relevant portions of the zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals. My husband and I have owned a house on North Lake since two thousand and ten. We're in favor of allowing short-term rentals in Dexter Township and we agree that some permitting and regulation of short-term rentals is prudent. However, we reviewed the Hamburg Township ordinance and we believe the, the proposed regulation is misguided. We also believe that the planning commission should postpone today's vote to gather more information and refine the proposed legislation. The first question that the commission should be asking is what is the problem that this legislation is trying to solve? It is unclear why the Hamburg ordinance is needed to address current issues with the regulation of short-term rentals when the township itself has acknowledged that there's only been a single complaint historically. From the meeting materials, I have gathered that a homeowner who recently purchased a property, applied for a permit, learned that there was no such permitting process. And that's how they ended up proposing the Hamburg legislation. These proposed changes did not come about from an in-depth research and analysis by the commission of similar ordinances in an adjacent to Dexter Township. Instead, the language of the proposed amendments was taken mostly verbatim from Hamburg Township ordinance. I am unsure why are we looking to Hamburg Township rather than the city of Dexter, city of Dexter or another local government entity. The due diligence and rigor that we would expect to change zoning laws does not appear to have been done in this case. Instead, the amendment suggestions were made by one homeowner. In addition to, um, my feeling that this is being understudied, we also feel that the amendments are unduly restrictive in version some for those who do want to obtain a short-term rental permit. The permitting process, um, sorry, the following proposed zoning changes are particularly overreaching. Quote, within a thousand feet of a proposed short-term rental, more, no more than thirty percent of the properties may be short-term rentals and of that percentage, no more than fifteen percent may be primary or better short-term rentals. Given on a first come, first served basis, end quote. Why limit the number of permits to these levels? The city of Dexter does not limit such permits. The city of Dexter does not limit the density of permits despite having higher density neighborhoods than much, than much of Dexter Township. Dexter Township, the city of Dexter's permits are due by December thirty-first and are good for one year. And everyone who wants a permit gets it provided that they agree to abide by noise, parking occupancy and other health and safety measures that are subject to enforcement. That makes sense to me. Why limit a local agent to forty-five minutes of the short-term rental? Also, what is forty-five minutes? How fast are you driving and what road are you on? Why issue permits on a first come, first served basis? That means the people who might, um, sorry, again, Dexter allows anyone who wants a permit to get one provided that they provide the city. provided that they provide the city with sufficient information to ensure the safety of the rental occupants and that they're not being used in violation of other ordinances by the city and affecting the enjoyment and use of their neighbors. Dexter Township has a population of approximately six thousand people in a mostly rural area. The city of Dexter has a population of approximately four thousand six hundred people in a higher-density area compared to Dexter Township. Higher-density towns that have housing shortages tend to have more aggressive restrictions and policing for short-term rentals that seek to discourage the conversion of single-family units to the rental market and make it so people who live in the community cannot afford, work in the community cannot afford to live there. To the contrary, Dexter has taken a less restrictive and more common sense approach to zoning and permitting for short-term rentals. The permit application is straightforward and the process is simple. Dexter Township is also proposing that if you live in RR, AG or RC districts, you cannot get a permit for primary hosted or non-hosted or accessory hosted or non-hosted short-term rentals. Is it against state law to prevent homeowners from short-term renting their properties unless they live in the Lake District? And I'm just gonna add by words, my mom apparently shares the comment of a previous commenter that it seems strange that we're restricting this policy to the Lake District. And finally, what is all the rush to get the new ordinance enacted by the November fifth election as mentioned in the materials? In the memorandum for tonight's meeting, commissioners previously stated that until the complaint by a neighbor of a new property owner in August, no other complaints about short-term rentals have been made. And additionally, we're at the end of summer, so I assume this won't be as much of an issue until the following summer. Commissioners, I urge you to approve short-term rentals and to regulate them, but I feel that postponing the vote and gathering more information is prudent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I'm not, I'm here on behalf of my mom, but I did have one question, if this is appropriate, I'd love you to ask it. In the township materials, my mom was asking what the longstanding policy was and just for some more clarification on the township's longstanding policy against short-term rentals.
It is, yeah, thank you. It is okay to ask that, but this is not the time for us to address that. But we'll try to make a note of that and get to it during our deliberations. Thank you.
My name is Steve, eighty-nine-eight-six, Dexter Pickney Road. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but maybe I can shed some light on this problem here. I live on the property adjacent to the lady that spoke first off today. And I have a fence up because I have a couple of dogs. They probably get to get in the lake to get out, so, but the fact of the matter is, when they put this property up for sale, all these properties, mine, the two that Marcy and Mike own and what the property in question, was at one time about seventy years owned by the same family. The Hitt family and the Hoffa family. Now, as they got older, started dying off, they started selling their properties. Why, when I moved in there thirty-five years ago, I knew all. Now, when Matt sold, well, the yellow house that's in question tonight, he sold it to Dan and his partners, who in turn sold it to, I forgot their name already, yeah, I always did. They're nice people I've met, I figured. But when they first put this property up, they had a couple, a nice couple, a nice couple came out there a couple of years ago wanting to buy it. They asked me what the neighborhood was like. I said, "The neighborhood's fine." And when I think of the property, I said, "Look at the subdivision map. You have no property, you have no parking. That is a road. Go back to subdivision map, they have no parking for this." None. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe, maybe three and a half to four feet out their porch. Maybe two spaces, three and a half feet deep. So there's no parking. Now, I felt when that one couple was gonna buy it, I told them that. They went to the realtor, I was threatened to go lawsuit for losing their sale. I said, "You wanna sue, sue me. Tell me what I told them wrong." I didn't. Now, the realtor, "Oh yeah, you can do whatever you want because they, they, they did this for this lady and her husband." So they're kinda stuck here. It's a difficult situation when you have no parking and you wake up one Sunday morning and there's seven or eight cars parked out there. I mean, and what do I, I've got my ninety-year-old mother-in-law there. We couldn't even get an ambulance down if we needed to. It's a tough situation right now. I personally, I told them to go back to the realtor, but they don't wanna do that. Just for the notes, your doc needs to be moved, it's on the alley. And that's, that's, I, we had to move, we had something over there a little while, years ago, and a lady down the street came over and threatened the township had to be moved, so.
The doc was there?
I know.
Excuse me, if you could just direct, it's okay to say that, but direct those comments to us.
And that was the deal. Dan was trying to, the previous owner tried to make with me and I went ahead and let him do it. But this is a different owner and I'm sure they're not aware. That's an alley that is, that is community property. Now, for me, I don't really care, but, you know, I, I, before, we've had ladies come down and made me lower a fence at three-quarters a minute and they were threatened to citation, put citations on. I personally love the lake experience, I wish everyone could have it. But I've been there, I saw all, I've seen all the renders, I never knew they were gonna, when Dan sold, when Dan and his partners bought that place, I didn't know they were gonna short-term rentals. Dan lived there, they took care of it most of the time. We have curations. But my personal opinion is, if I was to try to buy my house today and I had a short-term property next to me, I sure wouldn't buy it now. I don't see how it's helping my property, Doug.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Mike Mean, my wife spoke earlier, eighty-nine-seventy, Dexter Pickney. You know, when we bought the cottage back in two thousand and seventeen, we renovated it, we updated it. We updated it because we wanted to use it and we got to know the neighbors. And one of the big things and one of the big attractions to coming out to Dexter Pickney is, it's a slower way of life and it's a community. And when you have, you know, day after day, it's one thing to rent it on a weekly or monthly basis, but when you have transient people, you just don't know what you're gonna get, no matter how many times you've got them out. And I would ask you the same question as I asked everybody in this room. If you live next door to a property that is condos and you just don't know what you're gonna get, what would you, would you wanna move to that house? Would you make that investment in that particular property? You know, if it was gonna be your house? That's really the question is, you know, it's, it's getting to the point to where, you know, you just don't know what you're gonna get. And unfortunately, you know, it's one thing and I feel bad, you made an investment and, you know, if the realtor maybe overstepped the line of not really understanding what the rules and regulations were within the township. You know, unfortunately, you know, that's just no short-term rentals. And the only time we did have an issue is because stuff started happening. And again, if it was you living next door, what would that question be? Would you want that next door to you or not? You know, you're gonna get taxed dollars regardless, but people wanna come out here, it is a destination. They wanna buy and use it as either a cottage or a second home or a primary residence. So that's, that's really all I wanted to share, but just ask yourself that question. Because if that's what you want within the community, then that's a path. And I agree with the woman that was here previously, she said, "You really have to have all the checks and balances. You have to have an inspector, you have to have all these different items if you're gonna have it become a short-term rental type of community," or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Johnson, ninety-four-eleventh Dexter Pickney Road. And I just wanted to share that we have three short-term rentals within view of our property. And many of them have been short-term rentals for years and had no issues. There have been no incidences, we have nothing to complain about. It's a great way to meet people, different people and share the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is David Nathan Kaiser, I have a traumatic brain injury clinic in Chelsea, Michigan. And we actually have a short-term rental on North Lake at one-three-four-one-four North Lake Drive. And I guess I'm near, I'm empathetic to what this group's been going through. You know, the Hatfields and the Coles are a classic story and living near neighbors is a tough deal, so I hope that that communication comes through. But I think, I wanna offer just a different perspective because we're looking at it through a narrow aperture of, you know, people coming to live their Panama Beach fantasies at the lake. But that's not really what we experience in our utilization. Most of the people that come stay at our, at our home are people that are actually undergoing traumatic brain injury care. And they stay for a week to two weeks in order to have a place to stay while we go through that. And we actually use other Airbnbs in the area as well in Pickney and hell, in Dexter Township. So we are very much appreciative that they have a place to stay. As you know, it's hard for people to be able to find housing that's supportive over that time period. It's not great to try to heat out for two weeks in a row, especially around noise and sound. And those things are important. And I would also point out though that in addition to those cases, we also found it to be a boon to our community. So several of the people that have used our home are people that also live on the lake and have been able to use our property in order to invite friends and family to enjoy the lake with them, to be able to fellowship with other people in our community. Secondarily, people have also used it as refuge after something like a fire or insurance claim or a flood where they've had to use the housing temporarily in order to be able to have a place to stay while their home is being abated or being fixed. So I think while it is important, and I'm sensitive to the fact that you don't want people that are generally a nuisance to be near you, but that's, that isn't dependent on whether or not a facility is a short-term rental. It's more just a question of community. Also, there was mention, excuse me, mention made that Airbnb allows for people to to create tighter regulations around the things you allow to have done in your home. There were regulations that were given based on the Hamburg unit, that was good. Also, Mrs. Bloom, I think it was her comments regarding the city of Dexter's policies are probably more fitting and worth looking at, honestly. So those things are all things to take into account. And then secondarily to that, somebody mentioned having inspections. So in some of these cases, we're kind of imagining that short-term rentals offer a different living experience than someone living in a home as though someone living in a home is somehow, you know, better at taking care of their facilities. As a matter of fact, you're financially incentivized if you're renting your home to actually probably take better care of it. It needs to be cleaned, it needs to be kept, it needs to be taken care of. So when you think about inspectors, like I would be more leery of someone that has lived in a home for thirty years having code violations or things that need to be kept up rather than people that are, that are cleaning their, their facility and upkeeping, keeping it on a regular basis. Just something to consider as, as, as we put it through the aperture of looking at. Kind of, I mean, we obviously draw both sides, we're looking at the highs and the lows of possible experiences, but maybe use a different perspective rather than just part of the week. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Talia Anderson and I own a property with my husband and their son at nine-oh-three-four Dexter Pickney. It is not our primary home. We live in Yan Arbor. We have probably over ten years now experience of being Airbnb hosts in Yan Arbor and as well out here a little bit. And I just wanted to comment on a few things that have been decided tonight. I actually, we owned the property prior to this one in Hamburg Township and we were part of some issues that came up in an HOA and so we've been through this experience before. And I know I totally empathize with those that aren't for this. I also empathize with those of us who are for it. It's a difficult place to get a meeting of the minds because these are our homes, they're really important to us. We have put huge amounts of money into our homes, it's very important. With that being said, I do think that there can be a meeting of the minds and I think a lot of people have brought up what Dexter does. I really like that too, being someone who has experience with Hamburg Township's rules, with Yan Arbor's rules. I think I like what Dexter's doing. It's a great idea to take a look at. I'm a little wary of getting too heavy on the oversight side because that creates a lot of work for the people in this room. And that work, we don't wanna be duplicating that work. So there are zoning rules in place, there are rental regulations, all those kinds of things. I'm just worried about duplicating that stuff. And I think that Airbnb and VRVO already do a really good job of vetting people. So some of the issues that were brought up tonight were safety. I understand that, I get that. You don't wanna live next to a house where people are random that you don't know and you've got your kids in the yard and there's a random stranger there, right? But Airbnb does background checks and actually they have a rating system on Airbnb which I think is really important that we all think about because it does two things. One, it makes sure that guests who don't do what they're supposed to do or who break rules are not able to continue to rent. They get rated. If you have a one-star rating, I'm not gonna rent to you. And on the host's side, if you rate my property a one-star and I have had a bunch of five-star ratings, I can get kicked off the platform. So it kind of does the work for you on that end. And so I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that and how that works because it is really important and it does incentivize owners to a great extent to keep properties in working condition, safe, looking really good. It does bring up the values. I do think that there's an accountability issue when you own a property and you rent it out and that's something that needs to be thought about in this process. So hopefully we're gonna think about that. I hear a lot of talk about these inspections. As someone who owns rental properties, I think inspections can sometimes do more harm than good. So I think, I'm just asking that you guys be really mindful about what that inspection might look like if you go forward with that. So I just wanna say I'm, I'm in favor of allowing it so long as there's some common sense that goes into the, like the regulations around it and whatever ordinance that comes forward from it. So I hope that that is somewhat helpful and I hope that we can move forward and everybody can get along through the process.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gale-Katinsky and I have a cottage, ninety-two-oh-two Dexter Pickneyburg. And we've had it for...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years. And I didn't think a whole lot about the issues of Airbnb until yesterday morning when I saw your email and decided we were coming in. So yeah, I'm a little on the fence, I see both sides. But if one, and it's a potentiality, if an Airbnb came up next to me, I would be totally horrified because it's just not in keeping with the sense of community that we have out there. I see a couple of things. I went, for my information, which I'm sure is very suspect, I quickly went out to Reddit and the internet yesterday morning for about an hour and a half. And I can see that there are a whole lot of places and it depends on where you're doing this. Are you doing this in a beach community in Florida? They have a ton of problems. Everybody there is there to get drunk and party all of the time. It just destroys neighborhoods. People who just told me, you know, they're renting to people who are coming for medical attention, that's a completely different deal. How do you deal with those sets of people? You really have to think hard about that. And we've considered using Airbnbs, I have a son who uses them a lot. He's been in six weddings recently and hey, those guys partied hard for three days before that wedding took place in each case. So yeah, they've been using Airbnbs in the way they're frequently used. As near as I can tell, people get about eighty percent good people coming into their rentals, but about twenty percent are a problem. And I can't verify those numbers, that's just something coming from me after reading Reddit and places on the internet yesterday, like I said, for an hour and a half. Things that I saw coming up were that the police never come when they're called for problems unless it's when somebody has shot somebody else and there's been a death. They also don't come if somebody is shooting a porn movie next to where you and your kids are. There are problems that nobody's thinking about. And God, I hope this stuff doesn't happen here, but... happen here, but all kinds of things can happen in these places. So I really want to say that I hope you'll think really seriously before going down this road in a really easy way. Now, a couple of things that, the business, somebody said, "We are on forty-foot lots." Yes, we are on forty-foot lots, and they're very old alone Dexter Pinney over here. I'm always cognizant of the fact that that is very dry wood under whatever I've put on top of it to make it look nice for the present time. So yes, fire is a thing that I would be very, very concerned about, and all the other lots going up as well if that happens. So, uh, yeah, that's a real worry. And the business about policing when it's really needed and nobody ever comes, or they can't do anything because it's against whatever rules you have in place, you, the police can't, can't break things up. So that's a problem. And also people say, "Well, the township receives a fair amount of tax money from these properties, so they are disincentivized to do anything about problem properties." The question of just not having recourse because Airbnb and the other open-site rental businesses, they don't really do anything either when there's a problem with the neighbors versus the rental. That's frequently a case. I came up against that, and I encourage you to go look out on Reddit, ask your own queries and see what comes up. Now, my concerns here would be, um, if people are bringing transient watercraft, actual motorboats, um, are they bringing invasive species to this lake? We've spent a lot of time and worry on trying to keep these lakes clean. So what are we going to do about that? That's an issue. Personally, we just had our road done, and we put money into that. Now, if somebody's going to bring trailers with boats down that and bang, 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 and I've seen them, you know, we haul trailers through there once or twice a year to put them in and take them up, but if this is going to happen, you know, every weekend, then the road that we just put a lot of money into it, and I grant you, it's still gravel, but we have worked to get that, it's taken us years to agree just to get the darn road fixed a little bit. So if somebody's going to tear it up...
Kind of wind this up, please.
Yes, with the boat, with trailering the boats, I'm going to be really upset about that. And the business of trash. Trash goes out on a certain day. If people put it out on Sunday night, trash gets picked up Monday, but there's nobody there to take the trash can back in, or dogs get into it, or the wind gets into it, trash is going to be an issue that you're going to need to look into. So, okay, yeah, I will wind it up. You'll think of other things, and so will I, and I'll send you a letter.
Thank you.
Chair stall. Is it possible we could remind the audience that when someone is up here talking that they should be quiet?
Thank you. Yeah, there has kind of become a little bit of a, of a din in the back, and it, uh, not only makes it difficult for us to hear, it makes it difficult to pick up sounds. Our recording secretary can, can accurately transcribe, and, uh, everybody who has something to say should have the respect, please.
Hi. Thank you. My name's Kiara Nelson, and we own a home on First Lake Avenue. We own a waterfront, primary residence, long-term rentals and short-term rental on the Porch Chain, which we know and love very much. We stay in short-term rentals all over the world. It's a great opportunity to get to know the, the flavor of, of a place. So we own a permitted short-term rental in Hamburg Township. Uh, we have repeat visitors year after year. It's been a great opportunity for us to get to know people and to be able to show them how wonderful it is to live here and enjoy the Porch Chain of Lakes. We have repeat visitors that come back year after year just because they love to stay at the, the rental that we have. It's my opinion that a lot of townships, you know, particularly in Michigan, uh, you know, are having to update their language in terms of these new zoning ordinances, right? It used to be called, uh, bed and breakfast, and now short-term rentals are just really becoming a, a thing that we have to deal with and think about and, and regulate. So we were actually, I believe, one of the first to get that permit from Hamburg Township for that short-term rental. I think it's a good model. Is it perfect? I, I'm not sure, but I think it's a good model to, to take a look at. It's a very detailed process to get the permit. It's a lot like a certificate of occupancy, should you have a long-term rental or something like that. It's not just given to you. It, it, you have to spell out lots of things, like your boundaries, uh, you have to post that for your guests. You have to spell out your map of your boundaries, you have to tell them exactly where all of your property lines are, where your docks are, what they can use, what they can't use. Where specifically they're allowed to park, um, and where they're not allowed to park. You have to have signage. We have lots of signage up. We have signage up about quiet hours. It's very important for us that our guests know what the quiet hours are, where to park, where they can hang out, because we want to keep our neighbors happy. So the docks, the sheds, and then we definitely have exterior cameras and surveillance, um, most like I'm sure pretty much everybody does on, on short-term rental platforms. It's to protect our guests, it's to protect our property, it's to protect our neighbors. No interior cameras, just exterior. I just really think that anywhere you live, you might, might not like your neighbors, you know? But we do our best to only accept five-star review people, people with really good reviews because we want to have good people at our home that are happy to be there, will respect our rules, respect our property, um, keep us happy, uh, keep our reviews good, keep our neighbors happy, um, and, and that's pretty easy to do. But to run a successful short-term rental, you have to have good reviews, you have to do a good job, or else you just can't have a successful short-term rental. And I'm accessible to my neighbors anytime they have a question, a comment, a problem, of course, as are the police or any local, um, authorities, but I try to make myself very accessible to the neighbors so that if they have any questions or problems, they can reach out to me. So I'm very much in favor of short-term rentals being legislated in Dexter Township, and I think that we can do it in a way that makes everybody happy and brings a lot of people to this community to show them just how wonderful it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Did you say that I get to wait to the end of everything if I, if I have just a little comment?
Well, I'd, I'd like to make sure that everyone who, uh, wanted to speak is able to do so for the first time, if we could keep hearing from those who have not spoken.
Hello, I'm Ted Kepikis. I live at one three nine five three North Lake Road, on the North Lake. I've experienced short-term rentals as a consumer. I've used them worldwide, and it really afforded me the opportunity to, to new, learn new communities, new cultures, new people. I specifically came to North Lake as a VRBO renter, and I rented for three years, fell in love with the community, bought a place, built on the home before I was going to move here, and in the interim period of me living here permanently and building the home, I rented my home. It was an awesome experience. I shared what people shared with me. So the moral of, what I, the story I'm leaving is that renters aren't bad people. Bad rules are bad rules. Fast rules are bad rules. You can't race to policy decisions without doing something really head lifting and some analysis. I encourage this group to reach out to those VRBO, short-term rental people, and ask them about their, their experiences. Ask the communities about their experiences before we dive in and, and change the equilibrium of our communities. I reviewed the ordinance. It's silent on short-term rentals, so I don't know how we have a longstanding policy of no short-term rental when we're silent on it. I could put, you know, refrigerators, actually I could create planters, but the ordinance doesn't say anything about planters, so I guess that means I can't have planters. I think we have a flawed logic, and I wouldn't encourage this body not to, to rush into a bad decision, and, uh, it, it's, it's emotional. When people have neighbors, there's, and it's not always, um, there's not always harmony, but over, overdriven policy creates even greater tension. And writing rules and that are non-enforceable, we can't, can't, you can't track them, you can't develop them, uh, just a lot of caution there. And it's, and if short-term rental's an issue, it's not just on lake fronts. It has to be all our, uh, all our communities, all our districts to, um, to address the rules equally. And if parking is an issue, which it is, I believe that the township ordinance should talk about parking, which I believe it does, and I think we should enforce what parking's all about. There are dog ordinances. We should enforce the dog ordinances, not evil rental dog ordinances, but dog ordinances. If we have, uh, um, if we have people filming porn in public, I think there's public decency issues that we probably have ordinances on. So there's a lot of emotion around this. And there's lots of, uh, there's, there's great imagination, and I would hate to see policy decisions rushed to based on emotional imagination. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please step forward.
Yes, June Rollet, nine nine three three, El Concorde Drive, Porch Lake. I've lived at Porch Lake for forty-seven years now, and there have been, and we all knew, on the table there have been people renting cottages out there for the summer, since I've been there, and they haven't been a problem. But when you get into short-term rentals slash Airbnb, you're talking about a different animal. You're talking about people advertising nationally. You're talking about, they're talking about Hamburg Township. Everybody said Hamburg Towns- Hamburg Township's got a hundred and thirty-five employees, a full-time fifteen-member police department. What has Dexter Township got? We don't even have a zoning enforcement officer. We don't have a full-time zoning administrator yet. Who is going to enforce rules on this? We have a master plan that says lake residential is for residential use. We're talking about now opening up a commercial business where you advertise national to bring people in to your house. I understand Airbnb, because we allow for Airbnb, or not Airbnb, Bed and Breakfast because the owner had to live there. The owner knew what was going on. I thought of already my house at one time, the two doctors on Hershey, Pennsylvania, almost did it until I found out what they wanted to use it for. They would have had a class reunion of the University of Michigan Medical School at the house. And, you know, you, everybody talks about these, these things, there's a nice little woman, fuzzy thing, but it's not, and it impacts the neighbors. This ordinance is not written for that, and we haven't even defined what a short-term rental is. Is it a day? Is it two days? Is it a month? If somebody rents their house out for a month or six months or a year, nobody really cares that much about that because they become a neighbor to people. They understand the rules. But when you have people coming in for a holiday weekend, and they think, you know, once he opened his bottle, babe, we got to drink it down until we're out of the boat, we don't need that. You don't need it in the lake residential community. I don't know if any of you members live lakefront. I don't think you do, but don't put this on us as lakefront owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do not want to, uh, incur the ire of my, uh, colleagues here, but, and still not a time for dialogue with the planning commission, but we are interested certainly in getting this right. If there's anybody that wants to speak to us for a second time, if there was anything, and it's not, it's not rebuttal with somebody who spoke before you, but if there's anything that, uh, a thought got prompted perhaps by something somebody else said, and it's important for us to know that, I would, uh, I would appreciate it. In fact, all the comment that we can get would be helpful.
I think it's really, um, all about house rules. That is the key here. The reason I've never had any problems is I live next door, and I can keep a cool eye on everything that goes on. And I write house rules that I'm very strict on. I've never had a problem. I think that's the key. You've got to be able to write strict house rules and enforce them. You don't have to go and enforce them.
Thank you.
And one other question or concern is, to, actually to, because what he just said is enforcing house rules. How do you enforce those house rules when you're not there? Do, do the neighbors have to pick up the call, phone and call and say, hey, they're not following the rules? So you, basically your neighbors become the police, the policemen of your property. Secondly, what happens to my property that I've, you know, I've invested in and I've, I've redone? What happens to my property when people find out they have an Airbnb or the, the VRBO next to me? I'm sure it doesn't increase my property value. I'm sure probably, I'm making an assumption, that it probably decreases my property value. So I think that maybe you should consider those things. I don't have facts or figures on that, I'm making an assumption, um, but I think that's something that should be considered as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just... Mary Lou France, Don't Head Valley, North Lake. I would just like to speak with what she's talking about on property values. In 2020, our neighborhood talked about short-term rentals, and I did the research because I wasn't very happy with people just talking about what they think all the time. I wanted to find some of the truth. I, there, at the time, there were five rentals on North Lake. I talked to all of those people. None of them had had a problem. They even talked to some of their neighbors. None of them have had a problem. But the interesting thing that I want to address and answer to her question is I did the research on the property values on all of that. I looked at every rental property for the previous four years, and if that value went up or down, and I took every property next door to it and looked at that, and then compared it to ours. We do not have a rental. Ours is not a rental. And none of them changed. They all went up at the exact same percentage. Just because it was a rental, it did not take down the neighbor's property values at all. I have that information with me, with me, if any of you would like to look at it, but I think that we have to focus now on the facts. And I did the research, and I think it's, it's unfair for people to tell what they think about something like that without actually knowing what the actual facts were. That didn't affect any property values at all on North Lake.
Just, could I have one question, please? And again, this is not a dialogue. I think we need clarity. Were those property tax records, or were those sales records?
No, they were property tax rates, and how much the value of the home went up. I think, should I have a commentary?
No, that's fine. I just, we'll perhaps discuss that later, but that's, that's going to be an important distinction. All right, thank you.
Sales, value, property value.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'd just like to say to this young lady.
If you're going to, if you're going to speak, come all the way up here into the mic, please.
I mean, back to the, like, the, you know, wondering what these people are, I've heard a few people have said the word vagrants and things like that. Um, we've, we've got Ring cameras on our property, and we know exactly what everybody is doing the entire time they're there outside of my home. So the only thing that someone could do would be damage to the inside of my home. If there were even too many people for how many beds, like I have four beds on my property, there can only be two people to each bed, and I will know how many people are at that property because I just watch my Ring cameras. And again, I would also like just to say that we completely renovated our property. When we bought it, it was, uh, it was in really bad shape, had it appraised, and it's about three hundred thousand dollars. When we bought it, it was in really bad shape, had it appraised, and it's about three hundred thousand dollars more now than when we bought it. And it is a rental, baby.
Thank you. We need to wrap it up, but anybody, one last comment?
Okay, so, I'm asking. So, the people who live next door to, the couple who live next door to the home that we purchased, that started all of this, she mentioned that the gentleman who was a part of the group, there were three couples who went in and bought the home that, who owned the home for, I guess, four and a half years until we bought it. The gentleman that lives directly behind that she said was policing all of the ninety-one rentals that had transpired. And I included as one of my exhibits there that there was ninety-one rentals for just over four years, and that he specifically policed all of these rentals while people stayed there. He is a pastor, and he travels a lot for his job. He could not come tonight. He wanted to come, but he is out of town for something. But October's a very busy month for him, but he travels a lot. So, I just don't understand really how he could have policed all of these ninety-one rentals that they're referring to. Secondly, I address that we changed the RBO to have no more pets as soon as the first complaint happened, our first week into this. About maybe a month later, I had, we have a cleaning company who comes and cleans the property every time somebody checks out. So, she completed everything. She parked on, there's a road that's right in front of the cottage. She parked there, and right in front of, and there's a little bit of grass right there where she parked, that right by the tire, the neighbors next door that mentioned that they're afraid of dogs, and the dog came over to their house. Their dog came over without a leash and went to the bathroom right by her tire. So, she had asked them if they could remove where he just went to the bathroom because our, her client, which is me, our guests were coming to the property to check in that day. So, I just don't really understand why, if people like them are afraid of dogs, why their dog is walking around on our property without a leash. There's also a pretty fast road there on the Dexter Pinky Road, so I would be really afraid of my dog getting out to the road and being hurt. There was one family who said that he grew up on Baseline Lake, very familiar with the lakes, and he knew exactly where to put his boat in at the launch, and that he would be doing that. I do not know of any situation where they were anywhere near their boat, or made a dent, or anything like that. Our dock is right in front of the property. So, it's when you walk out the doorbell, you can see the dock is right there. So, we could incorporate a sign that indicates exactly where the dock is if the amendment is changed and we are allowed these short-term rentals. Let's see, I have a little more things. The gentleman that is on the other side of this property that we bought, he said that there's an alley on the side of the home, and that people were going on this alley, and that there was no space for his mother-in-law to come in with the ramp. That is not an alley. That is an easement. And to my understanding, the gentleman who is the pastor who had the home that was right behind, he recently sold it, he had to pay the gentleman who left, he had to pay him some money, however they did it, cash money under the table, so that he could have access to the easement, so that he could start to use this easement. So, I'm not really sure why he would say this is an alley. He knows that it's an easement. He accepted cash money so that this gentleman could use it while he was living there to get onto that easement dock. So, again, I don't really know what's going on with that. He said that there's no parking there in front of this property that we bought. Well, there's enough for two to three cars to be parked there. It's a road. And then his other statement was that he wakes up on a Sunday morning, and there are seven to eight cars that are parked there. There is no way to park seven or eight cars there in that part of the road. So, I don't really know where the exaggeration is coming from there. There is an issue where there's a road. It's kind of hard to explain, but there's the home, there's a home that's set back. Their home is like right next door. There's this road that comes through, and that's what they're referring to. Well, the home that they just, they ended up purchasing, come past her name, and they seeded it. So, they don't want anybody to drive through this road, and then they put up this wood-type thing where you can't drive through. So, she's talking about this road that, you know, as her neighbor would get to her ninety-year-old neighbor. They're a big part of that. They seeded it. They don't want anybody to take a step on it, let alone drive on that grass, let alone get through this wood huge fence that they put up. So, I don't really understand where the confusion is with what they're claiming there. And then we talk a little bit about, we talk a little bit about public access and putting boats in. Whether somebody is at a short-term rental, putting their boat in, or going to the different various boat launches, they're still going to be putting boats in the water in the chain of lakes. So, specifically from what I know for the time that we were there, there was only one boat, and there was no issues. So, I just think that all of these things are really important for you to understand that there is always, there's two sides, and there's always a good side that you want to believe in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a survey, Spicer, she surveyed.
If you're going to do that, come up, and then you're the last one because we have to keep moving.
She said, all the time. So, I had Spicer survey the properties, including my property, the property behind me. I have two lots, then another house behind it, and the lot eighty-nine seventy, as well as the gentleman was up there and spoke. I paid to have Spicer's come in, survey that property for me. So, I have a copy of that survey for you guys. I'd like to provide it for you, if you need it, because it tells everything. And there's some things that aren't being correctly said. So, I paid David to survey about three, four years, when I bought the property, before I bought the property, I had to survey.
Thank you. At seven thirty-seven, the public hearing for short-term rental is closed. And we will open the public hearing for, to amend relevant portions of Section 2.02, Article 4, and Article 17 of the zoning ordinance to allow utility-scale solar, wind, and battery storage facilities. And we could have staff presentation, please.
All right. So, the planning commission has been working on this for a while. And then, based on the, based on the public input session that was held in June, and then have had some decisions along the way to do a workable.
Excuse me just a second. If you need to discuss anything, please take it out and close the doors behind you so we can continue. Thank you.
So, there's a workable incompatible, the decision was to have a workable incompatible ordinance for the renewable energy. On page one of our memo, there was a listing of things that we.
Excuse me. Marty, can we hold off for about two minutes for these people?
Yeah, let's do that. Janice, do you get any noise from that mic when it's open and somebody isn't standing there speaking? Do you get anything that kind of?
Not normally.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that it's not picking up noise even when nobody is milling out, so you can accurately do your transcription. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Please continue.
And as the planning commission knows, but some of the members of the public who are here may not know that this was really, this was kicked off by Public Act 233 of 2023, which comes, becomes effective on November twenty-ninth of this year. And that law states that unless a municipality has, that if large-scale solar, wind, or battery storage, renewable energy facilities meet a certain capacity, for some it's fifty megawatts, for others it's a hundred megawatts, that they need to go through a process with the township of a hundred and twenty days to see if they can meet their ordinance. And then, it's at the applicant, so the energy providers' behest. They can decide that after a hundred and twenty days, they don't feel that the township has complied with the state law. They can appeal to the Michigan Public Service Commission, who then has rules and regulations to decide whether the municipality did or did not. And if the municipality did not, then that commission can decide on the application, rather. So, it supersedes zoning in those cases. We had a public input session, and there were concerns from the public specifically around decommissioning and location. Over the course of time since that, the Michigan Public Services Commission has come out with their rules, and they're very specific and very darrow. And basically said, anything that is not specified by the, by PA 233, such as setbacks, height, and noise, those, the municipality may not regulate anything else in order to comply with those laws. However, lawyers, the Graham Institute, and Michigan Public Service, and the Michigan Association of Planning have all said that township or any municipality could have what's called a workable incompatible ordinance, where you say, we're not going to agree with PA 233. We're going to have these other rules, and people can come, and we know that we're running a risk that, that somebody could say, we're going to go to the Michigan Public Services Commission, but we feel as a township that it is to our advantage to have our own rules, and we're willing to take that chance. Also, I want to stress to the public that in the MSPC rules, they say if you are not compatible, then you do have a chance to go back and redo your rules, your zoning ordinance again. We've also, and also, it's unknown, the MSPC process, they say, can take up to a year. And so, for all developers, time is money. And it would be unlikely that a special land use through, for one of these, would not take as much time. So, the planning commission has had three sessions and came up with, decided to go the workable incompatible ordinance route. And this is the second draft of that that they've seen. You also got input from the fire chief and from the township attorney. The township attorney was sent to you under privilege. You can refer to that tonight as you go forward. And then, also, the fire chief's review was in your letter. I think he's, they were going to have presence tonight. And so, just, we have a listing of things on our, on pages one and two of things that.
Just to clarify, neither the township attorney nor the fire department comments made it into the version that was, well, I guess what I have on my hand was the one that was in the tub. Certainly, they didn't make it into the earlier one that was available.
The fire chiefs, I think we put into the packet, and that's available online.
Or is that the one from the memo?
That was an email.
Or email, I'm sorry. Right, yeah.
Yeah. And then, there, from the township attorney, it has comments and green lines through it with track changes.
But those comments are not incorporated into the version of the ordinance we have?
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Got you.
And I'll, so, I don't want to go necessarily through all of the tiny, tiny details that we had in terms of changing. I just wanted to clarify one thing in terms of things that we changed. That the decibel requirements were changed to a one-hour average noise generated by the renewable energy system, components and auxiliary equipment with a maximum sound of fifty-five decibels, modeled out the outside wall of any non-participating residence or occupied community building, using the A-weighted scale as designed by the American National Standards Institute. And the specification that the applicant might be required to do operating sound pressure levels measurements from a reasonable number of sampled locations. And that came directly from the New York State Battery Energy Storage System Guidebook. Also, we highlighted, I know that was something that you were talking about in depth at the last meeting. Since we posted the zoning ordinance amendments, we, once the zoning ordinance amendments were posted, they shouldn't be changed. The Graham Institute released Planning and Zoning Battery Storage Systems Guide for Michigan local governments. We cited a number of things in there that you might want to look at and change based on that. Also, the MSPC's finalized rules we sent to you and a link as part of the review. Again, they have a, those rules have a very narrow definition. They clarified that it was as narrow as they could go, only the things that are cited in the law. Whereas, when the law was first came out, many, some attorneys looked at it and said, oh, because you haven't said it, the township can take that space. And others were saying, no, that's not the way to do it. So, the MSPC clarified that in their rules for the application. So, truly, if you wanted to specify where these renewable facilities would be, you would have to do a workable incompatible ordinance under those rules. Also, what's not highlighted in those rules, but I wanted to bring up to you looking at them further over the past week, is in those rules, it defined a hybrid facility. So, that would be battery storage and solar together, or battery storage and wind together. And that those nameplate capacities were the marrying of the two. So, if it had solar, and if it had solar and battery storage, it's a megawatts. It's nameplate, its breakpoint to qualify under PA 233 is fifty megawatts. For wind, it could be the battery storage and the wind together, and it's a hundred megawatts. What that means is that those footprints that we have been talking about could get a lot smaller with the addition of battery storage. So, instead of that minimum for a solar facility being four hundred acres, that could go down to two hundred acres along with a five-to-ten-acre battery storage. So, what I would, what we maybe should consider, and I know we're at the, we're at the end of this, is to look at whether you want to add a hybrid facility definition in as well, just to make sure that base is covered. So, in terms of planning commission actions, again, this is a text amendment, so the same standards as the other one, the master plan, and whether it complies with the master, compatible with the master plan, and state in federal law. In terms of the standards, we noted that on Item Four of the zoning plan, on page sixty-nine, the plan states that the township should amend Article Sixteen, General Professions, to include a section on personal renewable energy, such as solar, residential, and wind. The proposed amendments don't make any changes for energy at that personal scale. And I know the planning commission had decided to set that aside for right now in order to meet that deadline. Also, the zoning text amendments have been drafted in response to Public Act 233. And again, you've opted for a workable incompatible ordinance. So, you have four motions. One would to be accept the, to recommend, favorable recommendations of the proposed text as it's been attached. Another would be to make a favorable recommendation with changes. And again, we've had sections for those. We ask that one, if you want to go forward on that, at least Section 505 is amended to add renewable energy facilities as a special land use. Township attorney has flagged that as well, as well as a number of other changes. You could have it directed in that motion that all of those be incorporated as part of the recommendation of what goes to the township board. Also, there's a, you could make an unfavorable recommendation, or you could say that at this point, you wanted to postpone. And again, that's because there's not enough information, additional information is necessary, or significant changes are necessary.
Any planning commissioner have any questions for staff at this point?
Is our deadline still November twenty-ninth?
So, the law becomes effective November twenty-ninth. However, with the changes, with the rules that were put out for the application and the process for the MPSC, a number of law firms have asked their municipalities to consider filing suit against the MPSC, saying that the rules are not compatible with the spirit of PA 233. So, there's possibly, it's possible that litigation could happen around this at the end of November. And so, if that happened, there might be more. And so if that happened, there might be more clarity. Also, as we've always stated, you haven't had a developer approach you about this. So it's not as if you have, it's not as if something's coming down the pike. Even if somebody had started the process, they would have need to contact our office to file an application. The first step is to have a pre-application meeting. None of those have happened. So I would say that it's unlikely that you would get an application in the next month.
Would we still have, where, if we don't have something in place, would we only have 60 days from the date of the application being filed?
You would have those 120 days.
120 days.
That's specified in the act.
Okay.
And it's up to the applicant as to whether, the, the energy provider as to whether they wanted to go that route or work with the township.
And what would you think the relative merits are of the planning commission forwarding something to the township board that they would be able to act on and get in place by November 29? And if it's not perfect, if there's some issue with it, planning commission can take up an amendment later versus kind of taking our chances and see how the thing plays out longer term? We do nothing at this point?
I think that you're not putting your, by not, by not having something in place by November 29th of 2024, this is not a mandated change by a state law. This is a change, this is where state law said, if you don't follow this, this is the other process. And with the change in the rules, we discussed this in August when they had draft rules, but now the rules are finalized, it still has it that if you municipality are found to not be in compliance the first time, that you can change your rules and be in compliance at a later date. When the law first came out, um, it was unclear. Some, some interpretations was worst-case scenario, you're one and done. And that's not the case per the rules. So I think if you wanted to be precise in what this amendment is, and you feel like the information that you've gotten maybe now and the last time needs to be incorporated into another draft and looked at again, that is a legitimate course of action. The two things that I would say is just to, you'd be cognizant of that you wouldn't, you weren't meeting that deadline. And there's a small risk that somebody might bring an application and you're, you don't have your rules in place. Also, you will have, if you recommend it tonight, then it would go to the stand, the township board that currently exists, because their next meeting is November 19th. Your next meeting, well, not 19th, 17th. Their meeting is before the turnover of whatever happens after the election. And because of different placements, you know that board's going to be different.
All right, thank you. Any, any follow-up question I have would be more appropriately left to our deliberations, I think. But thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, hearing none. At 7:54, we will open up the public hearing to amend zoning ordinance to allow utility-scale solar, wind, and battery storage facilities. Anybody care to address the same, same ground rules as before? Go ahead.
This is a classic example of big government telling us what we got to do. It's sickening. Somebody in Washington tells the state, the state tells locals, we're completely out of picture. The only thing I, I have not a big problem with solar panels and fields. Only thinking that we have agricultural areas that are no longer in the agricultural areas. The scenic beauty is going to disappear, the people who ride their bicycles out here every Sunday. I think that if we're going to allow those panels in large form, we're going to have a clear, long-distance setback with some landscaping requirements. In over five years or 10 years, you're not even going to see it. You go along the highways, highways aren't, you know, rural, and they're rural. When you get to the highway, it changes. I don't mind seeing them there, but they got to be landscaped, we got to be out of sync. The other thing is windmills. We did a study in Washington County, put a windmill out on, on the proving grounds in Chelsea to see if there was enough wind in the area or wasn't. So I don't know if anybody's going to be looking at putting windmills out here. I think we need windmills out here in Dexter Township. And for sure, we don't need one at a higher elevation like on top of Peachtree. Everybody's going to look at the red lips all night long, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Rick Monge, Island Lake Road, Chelsea. We just traveled the whole country, about 5,400 miles. We saw the wind generators, the solar panels, and all these particular things. And we are a rural community with, you know, farmlands and everything else. And it would be detrimental to our community to allow these things to come in. With the battery facilities, uh, we need to have that in a concealed area. So if there's this build, we don't have a situation like the city of Ann Arbor or eastern Washington County with the deep wells that are underneath the bed, are not the problems. So that's just some of the things we need to look at. And put bonds on the people that build these things in case they would be fumbled. We have money to clean them up after they're gone, and we, the township, don't have to end up putting the bill for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Brian Crobs, 10071 here on River Drive. Just looking at the draft that was online, uh, one comment under decommissioning, uh, section four, item 3A. Regarding decommissioning, there is a limit to underground to a depth of four feet. I would remove that. Just, just tell them, remove everything above ground and below ground. I would block this into a limit as to how far they need to do removals. I did notice the document also references NFPA 855, which is regarding, uh, fire protection, in particular for the energy storage systems. So whatever kind of battery house they build. I would recommend that in our document, that you require at the minimum, uh, some type of fire alarm system. We obviously have a part-time fire department here, Dexter area Fire Department. And the earlier the notification that they can get to respond, the better for those guys and gals. And then I don't know, you know, maybe the fire department's already addressed that, that may be in their comments to you. Another recommendation would be for the battery house, um, some type of fire suppression system. Probably a gases-type system, because obviously they're going to build, if they build a solar farm, it's going to be in a farmer's field. There's really not going to be access to water supply. I don't think I would specify what type of fire protection system they need to have that can be worked out through the, the building review process. But I would highly recommend they have something, again, just to help alleviate any load on Dexter Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let's get, uh, yeah, anybody who hasn't spoken to us yet, please?
Hi, I'm Anne Young. I live on here on River Drive, just below the Portage Lake Dam. My cons- my biggest concern is with the windmills. I know that if you have windmills, you have to have wind. And windmills are a source of intermittent energy. In other words, you know, you got to have something else, because if you don't have a windy day, you're not going to get the, you know, the energy that you want. And the blades just don't move if there's not enough wind. And I know that a lot of the windmills are in remote areas. And if you put them in a remote area, you've got to put in transmission lines to, to bring them to the places where they need to go. They're very noisy. People who have lived next to windmill farms have talked about, you know, moving. Some of them have talked about the shadows that the blades make on their houses. I would think that it would decrease your property value to have noise and, you know, shadows on your houses all the time. They also cause environmental problems, because it's a known fact that they kill bats and they kill migrating birds. And being a bird lover, it really bothers me that they're going to be killing migrating birds. And a lot of places have started disassembling them, because they aren't working the way they thought should, they should. And disassembling just one windmill costs thousands of dollars. And then you've got to look at the environmental impact. Where are you going to put all those blades, you know, where are you going to put all the windmills when they start taking them down? Now, as far as solar energy and solar plants, my main concern there is just, um, in the manufacturing of solar energy, you get a lot of, um, you get a lot of greenhouse gases that are released. So, you know, if we're talking about green energy, producing green energy will, you know, all the greenhouse gases that it produces aren't, aren't green energy. And, you know, as far as, I don't know much about battery plants, uh, battery storage areas. All I know is we've been getting a lot of batteries from China. And it'll be nice to see batteries made in the US. I just want to be sure that, you know, if it requires a lot of acreage and there are a lot of people working there, that they're, they aren't taking away American jobs. That's my main concern. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say something about, a gentleman wrote a book about the removal. I would think the township ought to require a cash, a no shirt, cash, uh, sufficient to cover the total removal below ground and above ground. Surely, company may say bye-bye.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right at 8:03, public hearing on, uh, renewable energy ordinance is closed, and we will move on to action items. The first of which is recommendation to township board to amend relevant portions of section 2.02R, Article 4, Article 7, Article 17, zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals in Lake Residential zoning district using short-term rental development standards in Hamburg Township zoning ordinance. Before we get deeply into the deliberations, I'd just like to maybe offer a little perspective on, on a couple of things. I think there was perhaps some misunderstanding about why we're dealing with Hamburg ordinance. The applicant paid their money and submitted their, we can ask our, uh, planning consultant, but my understanding is that regardless of what the method was that they came up with that, they submitted to us, this is what we would like to change. That's why it's based on Hamburg, that's why it only covers Lake Residential, not RR or Ag. So what was presented to us was a very narrow focus. We can do what we want with that. Also, there was a, a mention of data about property values. I'd just like to mention that there's a, a difference between the assessment and the value or desirability of a piece of property. And while there should be, there's theoretically a correlation. That, maybe not a very good analogy, but if you could paint your house a real weird color and make it, uh, worth less for taxes, uh, people would probably do that. But for sure, it would make it less, uh, desirable, less, you know, what they might refer to as, as curb appeal. So that's not, it's not really a, a one-for-one correlation. My question for the planning commission would be, go ahead.
Well, I just, um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, well, first of all, I really appreciate the fact that we had this public hearing and I was not, um, I, somewhat of an explanation has been made, because I really felt like there's a lot more research that we need to do. And the reason that I'm raising my hand and speaking up is because, you know, we've spent since March working on a renewable energy ordinance, because we were required to, to, to. And this, um, situation with the short-term rentals is difficult, because there's already short-term rentals happening and have been, as was mentioned earlier, for decades now, I guess. So, um, I personally, because it's late and we've heard a lot of comments, and I know there's a lot of people on, um, both sides of the situation as property owners and investors, I think that I personally would like to see as a trustee, the board, uh, planning commission leaves on a task force setup, because I think, just like we did with the renewable, this is really complicated, and there's a lot more to it than, um, and I appreciate that the constraints that the person that applied has, because they bought this, didn't realize. But I feel like it's way more complicated than that one application. So unless by law, we have to, you know, which I don't think, based on your motion, is we, you know, there's a motion to postpone this, because, um, we don't have enough information. And I personally feel like there's way more than just Hamburg Township. There's, there's a lot more information. When we did the renewable energy ordinance, we did a postcard throughout the township. I mean, I just, I'm concerned about the amount of notification and the amount of information that we got to research this. So, um, however, I'm not going to be on planning commission in two months. So if this planning commission wants to do something with it tonight, I probably would not support that, because I personally feel like it's way more, there's way more work that needs to go into this. But I just want to bring it up, instead of, like, if we are going to have a long conversation about all the public comments and the pros and cons and the options and all that, I just wanted to throw that out now, in case other people agreed with me. And then we could talk about the ordinance that we spent six months on. Yeah, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up.
So I don't know if I need to make a motion to do, you know, to, to tape, to postpone this.
Well, let's see what the consensus is. I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's, uh, that's kind of the question that I wanted to ask the planning commission, rather than jumping into the details about,
Okay, great.
you know, accessory dwelling units and parking spaces and dense, uh, occupancy.
We could be here till two.
Yes.
And I'm not complaining about that, that's our job. But I think there's a lot of information, you know, this is a challenge that, I mean, we could lose local control over this, just like we have lost local control over renewable energy. So I think we need to be very judicious about how we move forward with it.
Yes, I, I agree. And this is before us tonight, because of the process of the applicant, this is not, now, we were going to have to address this at, at some point, but this is not the sequence of events, largely for the reasons that you stated. We've had some things in front of us that we must deal with. And to your point about, um, township board could have, I don't know, I'd have to figure it out. Two to three new members, uh, planning commission could have three or four new members. And I, I think in order of priority, yes, it is, it is best for continuity, is best for purposes of, uh, whether we need to or not, you know, drive to the November 29th date for the one that we have invested all the time in. And it is, uh, not the same scenario, whether it's this group or, uh, differently constituted planning commission in a couple of months, or, you know, different township board in barely over a month. There's not that same amount of catch-up that needs to be done. But I think the question you're asking of our, uh, of our planning consultant, that is, consultant is, is there a timeframe by which we have to deal with this? Because the applicant, you know, paid their money and gave us their request.
So the zoning ordinance doesn't specify a time period. And it has the same process, whether it's a township-initiated zoning ordinance or it is, uh, one that's initiated by a property owner, which that's- or it is one that's initiated by a property owner, which that's the route that the applicant used. However, I will say that they've asked for a decision and it should not be postponed indefinitely. So, I would, if you would like to go that route, I would advise you to do one of two things. Is either to, motion to postpone, but at the same time, give direction to the township board that you feel that, you know, a working group needs to be set up and a decision needs to be made in a certain time period in order to give that clarity to the applicant. Or you could make an unfavorable recommendation. And then within that same motion, say, you could say that we're making an unfavorable recommendation based on the text presented to us. And we feel that that's not compatible with the goals of the master plan. But we feel that short-term rentals could be and would urge the township board to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment and process like the one we've done for renewable energy within the next year. Because you need to give the applicant some clarity as to what's going to happen with this. You know, what's going, a time period, because if you don't give them a time period, you're not giving them clarity as to where it's going. And if it keeps on being postponed indefinitely, then you might have a due process issue.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
It might not do any good to approve this for her because commenter number nine, I didn't have time to write everybody's names down. But he lives next door to Amy Bennett, the person who filed the application. And he said that there's no off-street parking available for that particular property. So, on number three, here it says, "One off-street parking space is required per bedroom if short-term rental is hosted." What if it's not a hosted? Then if it's not, yeah. What's the parking situation going to be for her?
So, the parking, so, if it was approved, then she would need to come in and tell us exactly where on a survey and a drawing where those parking spaces would be and where they would be in case someone is there, whether it's hosted or unhosted. And to your point, if she didn't make the rule, meet the rules, the application would be denied.
Okay.
Also, you should note, and the applicant was told, that they could apply as a bed and breakfast. Because under section sixteen thirty-six, uses specifically not listed, the use is not listed but determined to be similar, the land, the use shall be subject to the development standards of that similar use. That long-staying policy has been that a short-term rental is similar to a bed and breakfast. That is a special land use in that zoning district. That requires somebody to live there and be the manager. So, there is an option for any short-term rental to go forward as a bed and breakfast. And then that could also be something that you cite if you were going to look at a unfavorable recommendation.
But that's under the existing reg for bed and breakfast.
Yes.
Because I mean, and this, the draft that we have, I had specific questions on this draft. Like, a bed and breakfast, under the new proposed reg, you can't have a bed and breakfast within two hundred feet of another building. Which seems to me there would be no bed and breakfast allowed on the Lake Residential district.
And again, we took what Hamburg was asked, sorry.
Yeah, so, I guess, I, I feel like even if we said, or somebody decided we shouldn't do a task force, I still feel like this version has, I mean, is that something, there's some serious questions that we haven't even discussed and we could discuss tonight, but, you know, we just do, do renewable. And actually, and a lot of the people that spoke said that we need to do research, you know, it is a deep subject. So, I do think that it might behoove us to postpone this somewhat in a short timeframe and try to come up with a, you know, holistic approach that addresses most of the concerns we heard.
Procedurally, and I can probably argue this either way, but, you know, our chair of ZBA is with us tonight. What we have before us, I, I think I agree with what Commissioner Mayor was referencing. What we have before us, I think, is not workable and should not go forward. For one thing, the accessory dwelling unit portion of that would conflict directly with the master plan. You know, there's some other points that have been brought up. But procedurally, while it would be within our authority, is that the best thing for the township, if we just vote this down and then figure out what the next approach is going to be? Or should we keep this in front of us and with modifications, do something that may or may not remedy the, the applicant's situation, whether it's, you know, parking or distance or whatever? So, I, I guess the question for you would be, because this is somewhat unusual for me at least, do we, would we be better off? Okay, what applicant, what you presented to us isn't going to work. We could enumerate some of those reasons and we dispense with it, but we know that as a township, we have to address it, whether it's township board sets up a task force or some other, similar process. Or do we look at and say, well, you're, you know, you're kind of maybe close and we're going to keep working on, on your particular application? But then it strikes me that, well, that's a little bit narrow.
Mr. Chair, may I jump?
Sir.
chime in here. I made a specific point of going out and physically examining the property as today. There is no parking. Maybe you could put a Harley in there, but sure that there is no parking for an automobile. How they access whatever parking area they have, I'm not sure. Secondly, if you look at the site map, which is posted on GIS, this property is one thousand and four square feet in the house. There is one bedroom, and as I recall, it was like two hundred and twenty-five square feet in that bedroom. There is one kitchen and one living area. Secondly, we have suggested that maybe this could be done as a bed and breakfast. But how, it can't be a bed and breakfast because under our definition, the owner or manager of the property has to live there too. Well, now, we're getting awfully cozy in a thousand and four square feet house. So, I don't, frankly, I don't think there's any way that we can effectively deal with this application tonight.
Just to that point, and I have not looked up the verbal listing. I don't know if anybody else has. At least the real estate listing that was presented to us in the packet with the application, Exhibit A, says that that's a three-bedroom house, one bath, which actually makes things worse because if you can't figure out where to pull one car, the requirement, I think, would be one vehicle for each bedroom, isn't it?
But where are the, Mr. Chair, where are they going to put the other two bedrooms?
I don't know about that.
Unless our accessory report is wrong, which I doubt that it is.
Yeah, I, I don't, well.
I think I'd like to make a point of order. I think we're supposed to be talking about an ordinance, not an actual, the application of the ordinance. And that's kind of why I was kind of rude, or I don't know what the right word is, but kind of pushy on like, can we?
I think the relevance of the discussion is if we, if we were to approve what's before us tonight, which I don't think anybody is inclined to do, that wouldn't solve the issue that brought it to us tonight.
Right. But that's not our issue.
No, except that it brings us, it brings us back to, there's really no remedy for this tonight.
Correct.
We, we approve it. It didn't fix the situation for the applicant. If we don't approve it, nothing really changes.
But the ordinance, it's not, it's about doing an ordinance, not about the actual application of the permit. So, what we should, in my mind, we should be focusing on the ordinance that's being recommended. And I guess to your question earlier of Megan, that whether or not we should do it is based on information. Motion four or motion three, in other words, saying, taking what they recommended as text. I kind of, I personally kind of think motion four, just to keep it like there is, you know, we're not saying we're opposed to, we're not taking a position necessarily. And I, and I would ask Megan, our consultant, what her, your recommendation is. I kind of felt like motion four, saying that we're not, not, we want to postpone this and, and because we need additional information. And then add to this motion, we request that the township board or supervisor, whoever the appropriate party is, set up a task force at the next meeting, make, make a recommendation that we have a task, some kind of subcommittee, and study this and resolve, having an ordinance in place within four months. I think that, I think a time stop, to your point, is fair. I think these are probably summer rentals. I think we have a problem now, because it's been brought to our attention that we have a problem in the township versus when it was before, we didn't have a problem. We knew it's an issue like it is for all, many, many inland lake communities across the state, which is why, is why we keep having this state legislation bubble up and it's hanging out there. And I would be concerned that all of a sudden, we're going to start getting, you know, short-term rental owners up at Lansing, okay, you did it with renewable energy, do it with short-term rentals. So, so, so that, I guess I would ask Megan for your advice because you have asked that question. And I, I don't mean to, like, but we're focusing on the ordinance. That's really why.
And I agree completely. And if we can come up with a proposal as you suggested, if you could put that into a motion, I will support it.
I'm still not sure if it's better to just deny the application or, you know, which I kind of feel like is like throwing the baby out with the bathwater and that to, or motion four. So, and I know you're not a legal, legal.
Nope, not a lawyer. My choice.
So, it's probably putting you in a really bad position.
But let me, Mr. Chair, may I answer? So, if you chose on motion four, the way that you described it, that you would be postponing it based on additional information is necessary, specific, and I would say specifically information in terms of consulting with the public, short-term rental owners.
Other ordinances.
Other ordinances. And that should be done within a four-month period. So, and authorized by the township board, not just by the supervisor, the township board. So, that then, because there might be funds associated with it in terms of, in terms of consultants or whatnot. Maybe not. But then that has those bases covered. And I would ask, I, I highly recommend that you have a time period in order to give the applicant some clarity because they have, they brought forward that motion. They, they brought, they paid the application, they paid their fee, they're, they're owed some due process. And I feel like it's, that it's a little, you're a little bit on a shaky ground in terms of postponing it and not giving them an answer. But again, I'm not a lawyer. So, I think you are within solid planning principles in order to do that. And then, again, the other option is motion three to make a unfavorable recommendation. But then you can add to that motion that you feel like this is worth study and action by the township board at some point in time.
So, if there's discomfort with option four, which would be postponing it to a date certain, I understand that. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with denying it outright because that, the applicant paid their money, took the initiative. There obviously are a lot of other people affected by it positively and negatively. And I'd just be a little concerned that by just flat-out denying it, yet we know that we have to work on it, we have to do something with this issue, that we have then taken the applicant out of that loop, kind of. They're, they're no longer engaged with this particular issue.
I support four. I think we should go with four.
And if we have four, we need a, a date certain that we're postponing it to.
So, I'll move, I'll move motion four with the verbiage up to, do I have to read it?
No, but if you put the date in, I'll just read it back when it comes time to take the vote on it, if you want.
So, based on, postpone the proposed text amendment for Article four, seven, Article seventeen zoning ordinance to, it's four months, October, February twenty-eighth, or what's our, do we need a?
So, the, whatever the February,
February.
Planning commission meeting would be?
Yeah, February, so what's the third, the fourth?
You know what, I might have that because that's still part of the fiscal year and it's in our master calendar, it'd be February twenty-fifth.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Yes, February twenty-fifth, yeah.
So, postpone the proposed text amendment to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five for the following reason, additional information is necessary, such as additional ordinance review of similar communities, sufficient public participation, and conversations with other owners of short-term rentals and neighbors. And possibly other information that may come forward as a subcommittee looks at this. And then item two, so that's item one. And then item two would be, is the township board, this motion would pass with the request of the township board, set up a sub, set up a committee to study this issue to have further information provided for the planning commission. Okay, go ahead.
Do we, do we want to do that at this point? Or would that be the February planning commission can decide if they're going to request the township board to do that?
Why are we requesting the township board to do it when you, Mr. Chair, have the authority and the power to set up such a study committee yourself?
Well, that, that makes me, yeah, that makes me seem so awesome, but, you know, I probably have one or two meetings max left and there would be, yeah, like I just heard shouted out by the audience that I have no financial authority to do such a thing. And, and really, it ought to be, if we're going to, if we're going to move this to the future, I think there's probably more that goes with this before it's ready to even make a recommendation like that to the township board, I, I think. Or set up a study committee here, because if we were to appoint a study committee right now, who would it, you know, who would it be?
I think the point I was trying to make up, make is that the township board should be setting up something to study this now that it's come to our attention that this is an issue that has a problem. Versus in the past, if we'd known that the, this has been going on, but there weren't problems. I mean, that, one of the questions was, what is our long-term philosophy around short-term rentals? It sounds like it was like, well, we knew it was going on, but there was no problems, so.
Kind of like, don't ask, don't tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, if nobody raised a problem.
But now, I kind of feel like we have a responsibility as a township board because it's been brought to our attention that somebody invested in our community with the understanding. Like, there's a lot of problems here. The Realtors shouldn't be saying that, like. So, I, I think there's so many layers. And to your point, I agree with you that the, the ordinance part, but there's other pieces in there besides the ordinance part. So, I do think that it, it's a board-level process that, about putting this committee together. So, I guess my only question would be, is it part of this motion or would it be a separate recommendation? So, I don't know.
There's, well, I, I think that's an interesting question. And being the liaison between township board and the planning commission, I'd be good. I don't, I don't mean it back at you, but, but it could be a discussion topic at the township board and tell them that it's probably something needs to be looked at on a little larger scale than just planning commission dealing with one particular proposal made by an applicant.
Well, and the good news is, we had a lot of people come that are very passionate from a, a lot of different perspectives. And I think that'll be really helpful to continue the conversation. So, I just think some of these folks are, one gentleman, I don't think he's here anymore, but clearly he's been relying on, this is a source of revenue. And he's very distressed. And I would hate to not move quickly when we have current residents that are very distressed. And that, so, so not only the applicant for the ordinance, but just in general, some of the folks that spoke on, on, from many different perspectives have a lot of concern. So I think the board would be well-served to try to set up something sooner than later.
Yes, and has been done with some other major issues. A few years ago was even development or, or, you know, subdivision-type development. More recently, it's been marijuana in whichever form, medical or commercial or whatever. The township board, I presume, would have the power and authority to place a moratorium on this issue until it gets together what it thinks is actionable to the best interest of the township residents.
So I, I think we should also still consider that this whole thing started over one complaint. And the people who spoke, who have short-term rentals, a lot of them have been doing it for years. And we have only received one complaint. And when she stood up here and talked, and she aired out all of her complaints, it bothered me that are these, all these new complaints, it started with a dog, then it was a ding on her boat, and then it was a clogging of the road. But did, where were these complaints when the last person who was renting that place for forty years? 'Cause we got to see all the names of every person who rented that property for the four years preceding the sale of this property to the new owner, who's spent all this money to ask us to help her.
Maybe I misinterpreted, but I thought what, what prompted that one complaint was, oh my gosh, I just learned that these are not even allowed by the township. I didn't, you know, I didn't think there was a basis for complaining about it before.
Oh, I, I guess I didn't. I might not have caught that, but we had, how many speakers did we have? I think it was like nineteen people spoke tonight on this issue.
The, the other thing that some future planning commission board might wanna consider, we, we heard how the agencies will vet people, but there's nothing in our ordinance or proposed ordinance or I presume, no matter what version of an ordinance, that would say anything particular about Verbo, Airbnb, whoever else. So, so you could have a short-term rental that has no, no vetting at all. We just need to keep the, you know, other side of that at mind, but.
One thing I will tell you is that I am an avid user of Airbnb. And when you do the, when you stay at a place, you write a review about the, the person you rented it from, and they write a review about you, but they are blind. You don't see, neither one sees the other's review till you both have written them. So there's no punitive reviews. And when I have wanted to rent a place, I've had to wait for that person to go and look at my reviews to determine, and a lot of times, they ask you, you have to tell them why you want it and what you're going to be doing. So it, there is, when they go through Airbnb, and I'm not sure how the other one works, there is a review process.
But we can't legally require that.
I understand that.
And I don't, just make sure I'm not getting too, too far from what we're supposed to be doing right now. We don't have a motion mainly because, mainly because I didn't recognize.
I made a motion, did you get it, Megan?
So I think it might be cleaner to make two motions.
Okay.
Is the first, based on the information provided by staff and during the public hearing held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission postpones the proposed text amendment for section two point oh two R and article four, article seven, article seventeen of the zoning ordinance to February twenty-fifth for the following reasons, additional information is necessary, including, and then you had a list.
What I, what I had written down was ordinance review of other units of government, additional public engagement.
Meeting with the owners, the investor, like, the people that are currently do, have been doing this for decades, like, that's kind of a problem. I mean, we have to address it.
Consultation with short-term rental owners. And then, and I, I would also say consultation with agencies such as the fire, DA.
Enforcement agency.
DAFD, the sheriff, and Chelsea area construction agency, to see if they had any issues from, from their perspective. They may not, but it's not, or, you know, such as.
Don't these places have HOAs?
Well, that could be also added to the list. Any choice. And I would just leave that motion at that. I'm gonna make a separate motion that the planning commission asks the township board to consider funding for a task force to research the things that were in the motion to postpone.
Sounds good.
Do we want them to establish or just?
To establish, to, no, well, they, they could, I would say to establish, establish a point and fund. There, you have all three.
Well, let's deal with the first one first and see if, uh, let me read back what I wrote and see if Janice and I are in sync. It would be more proper to ask for a second, but I'm not sure that anybody would know what their second. I think if I can't read it back correctly first. So based on the informa, I'm sorry.
Who made the motion? And do we go back to the original motion at eight twenty-six? And it's now eight, eight thirty-seven. Do we go back to that original?
No, because that was a run-on motion.
Yeah, for better or for worse, I never recognized that as a motion. We never got support for it. We're kinda just, this isn't great parliamentary procedure, and just kinda mushing through it.
Thank you, Chair, for your patience with me.
No, it's, it's important that we, that we get this right. And I really appreciate and value your perspective on it.
Thank you.
Based on information provide, based on the information provided by staff and during the public hearing held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission postpones the proposed text amendment for section two point zero two R and article four, article seven, article seventeen of the zoning ordinance to February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five for the following reasons, additional information is necessary, including ordinance review of other units of government, additional public engagement, consultation with short-term rental owners, consultation with public safety agencies, and Chelsea area construction agency.
And consultation with homeowners associations.
Thank you. That was moved by trustee Driscoll. And anybody care to second that?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Birch. Is there any further discussion? Okay, let me make one more attempt, unless, unless you've got all that? You want me to try it one more time?
Got it.
Thank you. So, take a roll call, vote please. Commissioner Hurd?
Yes.
Commissioner Driscoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Stroud votes yes, that's seven yes and no-no. With that, we can move to our second action item.
We were gonna do a.
I'm sorry, we're gonna do the second motion, thank you.
Do you wanna do it?
You know, I, I flipped the page on this, I'm not sure I can even find it now.
Well, I guess I would make a motion that the planning commission requests the township board to provide fu, funding for a task, uh, the township board establishes and appoints and funds a task force to study short-term rentals in the township. Vet everything.
Planning commission asks the township board to establish, establish a point and fund a task force to study short-term rentals in the township. Moved by Driscoll, is there support?
Support.
Mayor? Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, vote, Hurd?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Birch?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stroud votes yes, that's seven yes, no-no.
Chair?
Ma'am.
Wouldn't be able to go fill my glass?
Yes, you may. That is more implied authority than I actually have.
Mr. Chair, please, do we want to request a five-minute recess?
Uh, we can do that. So it is eight forty-one, we were recessed until eight forty-six.
Okay, do note that I cannot pause the live stream.
And, and in fact, I would request that if you could, you do not. So we are totally transparent with anybody that's ever gonna view this. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Good night.
Good night, Brooke. Good night, Brooke. Thanks for coming.
For the rezon, for the rezoning, yes. Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yep, so, and then you need ordinance that goes along with that, when you need section. No, you don't. Well, it's one of the things I hand out to the first supervisor when things were advertised, we should get a lot of applicants, I said, if anybody who was sat in would have looked at, would have looked at your primary and then looked at what team happened. And if you don't know, then unless you already want that job, why would you apply fire? On the short-term as well? That's not that much, maybe four or five, it's in terms of like talking to her and then converting, and then doing the review, the review of her, just a lot more. It was nice to meet you. Did you know the lady who filed the complaint? 'Cause when she said, when she said she called you up and said, hey, Mags, and I was like, what? I, it was, I was curious, I thought you guys were besties or something, I was like, oh, okay.
If I have any break, I have to remember where, where we left off.
Oh, well, it was a clean break.
Genesis, I'm there. Yeah, I think eight forty-six is when I said we would reconvene. So for anybody watching, it is eight forty-six, and we should, I've got twenty seconds. We should reconvene, but we need the recording secretary, so we're gonna continue on pause here.
This room gets really dry. And I must've drank half my water before I got here and did top off before I came.
I was wondering if it was just me, it's.
Yeah, it's always really dry, that's why, it's like, if I, if I'm here for this short period, I never worry about bringing water, but if I come for a meeting, even when I come for the VOT meetings, I come with a jug of water, because it's so dry in this room. It's okay. So I was wrong, I think there were twenty people, twenty people who got up. That was a lot of people. And I, I gave out a few names, but some of them chose some.
We're still, yeah.
No, I've been, we've been, yeah, this has been a while.
All right, we have everybody back in the room, we have our recording secretary. So even though it's a minute after whatever I said, we will reconvene. I think where we left off was we were about to go into action item B, which is the renewable energy ordinance. Anybody have anything they wanna start out with? I, I have just kind of a general question of with, with some inputs. We don't, let me, let me phrase it in the form of a question. With a couple of inputs that we have received, there's not actually a document in front of us right now that has everything in it that, so procedurally, if we wanna stay on track to getting this to the township board for their November meeting, and we, I'll take that back, because our meeting is gonna be moved for, before the township board meeting, because otherwise it would be Thanksgiving week. I'm just trying to figure out, what do we need to accomplish tonight? And what are our mechanisms for accomplishing that? If we were to stay on track and allow the township board the opportunity to dispense with this issue before the November twenty-ninth date of effectiveness of the state law?
Did anybody read the notes that came with the email we got from Sarah? And did anybody find that those notes were actually very thought out? And maybe be added, like the definition?
Sensitive receptors.
Yeah, sensitive, adding the definition for sensitive receptors, landscaping bond, you know, things like that, maybe adding those in. It, it seemed like, and I'm not sure which one, which person commented about it, but speaker, I, I'm not sure which, which person it was, but they had spoke about, you know, making sure the landscaping was there to just kinda hide everything. So maybe a land, I like the landscaping bond.
Jim Drollet?
Jim Drollet, yeah.
So I thought the, the information we got was, had some good suggestions in there. I just don't know how we're gonna get it into this version before, and I didn't know if we should just pass the version and have it sent to us in the final weeks, and then, like, say in December, modify it again. I don't know procedurally what's the best way to do it.
But if we, the thing is, then you're saying we modify it after the Board of Trustees approves it at their November meeting, then we go back and modify it?
But then we would have, I don't know how we're supposed to get these in there.
Yeah, so part of that process would occur like a series of amendments or, or, you know, one group of amendments that wouldn't have to be done. Yeah, so part of that process would occur, like, a series of amendments, or, or, you know, one group of amendments, that wouldn't have to be done sequentially, but, after we pass this, it's kinda like, well, on a different scale, it's kinda like what we've been doing when we have seen, uh, there's an issue in the zoning ordinance that we need to address, we just fix it after the fact.
Okay.
Megan?
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
So for a motion, what you could do is you could do motion number two, um, and then say, the text amendment drafted by the Planning Commission has the following changes. Accept all edits and comments from the township attorney, add items one through three, um, well, a- add, add the following, the language suggested by DFD in their email dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and D, add a definition of hybrid facility to match what is in the MSPC rules. I think that would be.
Could you repeat?
Sure.
I, we, I guess, I had one of the specific comment on the draft we got, that, um, last meeting, Mr. Birch had suggested we add the fire response plan, the description of hazardous materials on site to be posted for first responders at the gates, and it does say, just a description of materials, this is page nine, it's sub O I B, it's, it just says a description of materials, that seems pretty broad to me and vague, and I think it should be like hazardous materials or toxic materials, and I didn't know since the fire response plan, if the fire department representative has an idea on that.
Uh, Doug's sitting here. Chief is here.
Yep, Chief Armstrong, if you would be so kind as to help us out with this.
Chief Armstrong, make sure that the green light is on, the button's on top. Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Armstrong, Dexter Park. Yeah, I, I kinda have two schools of thought on, on that specific question. If you limit it to hazardous materials, there are other materials in there that may become hazardous in an emergency situation, but may not be placarded as hazardous when they start out, so having it say materials really gives, puts the burden on them to be really complete about everything that's in there. So I, I think that that will, will cover it, and having that listed on the entry gate kinda gives an overall inventory of everything that we might expect in there, because, again, under fire conditions, things that are ordinary can become toxic or hazardous, and, you know, appreciate that it's very comprehensive with regards to the requirements for ongoing training, familiarization, tours, and, and work with local public safety responders to make sure that they're clear on everything that's going on there, and best prepared to respond.
Thank you. We, we had a couple of comments, uh, tonight. Requires me to read my own writing, so bear with me. Require fire alarm systems, so maybe fire department gets an early warning versus somebody drives by and, oh my gosh, what's going on over there? And another one was explicitly require fire suppression in the battery house. What are your thoughts on those?
Batteries are tricky in that there is no current suppression that's effective. Our approach to electrical vehicle fires is to hook the chains to the vehicle and pull it away from everything else that might burn, and stand back and, and basically let it burn, because we don't have enough water to put out, we can't get the water to where it needs to go inside the batteries. Those buildings, if, if there's a fire in there, it's likely we're not gonna even come close to it and try to enter it. There's well-known video from Surprise, Arizona, of firefighters that attempted to enter one of these big battery storage buildings that had been on fire for four or five hours, and the smoke kinda died down, they thought it was okay, as soon as they opened the door, it blew up, and it blew firefighters eighty feet away through a fence, and seriously injured them, so, uh, the current recommendations are, you know, stay away, you know, keep the other people safe, keep the fire from spreading, you know, to a field or any other structures, you know, usually these things are built below a moat, and, um, stay back, and so, it's, you know, suppression, I, I, you know, I don't have a strong opinion on. I, I think alarm systems are good, you know, the, the eight fifty-five standard is, is very comprehensive, and really addresses exactly these types of, of situations, and we are working with the township board to adopt a fire ordinance for the township, which would bring that whole eight fifty-five standard in, and then any commercial project would be under the entire eight fifty-five, not just sort of the, the certain couple of sections that are, that are pulled out from there, and the, the hope is that, you know, that'll, that'll be undertaken here in the next, uh, six months or so.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Uh, Chief Armstrong, you mentioned, uh, placarding on the entrance gate. Would you consider, sir, possibly not having it on the entrance gate, but on a supervisory building or something inside the facility so that it will not be available for the casual passerby to see what's in there and maybe create curiosity?
Yeah, I wa- I wasn't speaking as a requirement, I was reflecting back with the right language I read in, in your ordinance, that, that says that it's required on all entry gates and, and areas, so, um, we, we need it somewhere where we can access it without having to go up to the building, but there are definitely ways to do that, you know, with a, with a Knox box, which is a, a, a key box that we have access to, uh, we could, could have that information, of course, we're gonna be strongly pre-planning any response there, so we're gonna have lists of all that stuff electronically on our tablets, and have that information well before we even arrive on site.
Uh, I was, it was just keeping.
I, I, it's still important to have it on site somewhere, but, yeah, I, it, it wouldn't have to be, you know, posted where I agree that people that don't need access to it.
Thank you. Would we accomplish that with statements, something like placarding as approved by the FDA? Rather than even required by, because I'm not sure if you've got anything that requires it, but at least if you have reviewed the plan and you approve with, you know, you approve whatever that proposal is.
If your ordinance says as required by us, that gives us discretion to require whatever we think is, is reasonable as the authority have jurisdiction, so.
All right, so it could be placarding as required. All right.
So item four would be a description of materials on site and protocols to be placard at a location on site, approved by DFDA, DAFD, thank you.
I think that's, I think that's the intent, yes. Anybody have, uh, any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
I guess, one, one other comment, I, I didn't see in here, um, you know, Megan, we just did the, the Verizon generator.
Yeah.
Uh, approval, that had really clear requirements for access to the site. I didn't see anything in here that, and I may have missed it, but I don't see anything that, that indicates that, that there really needs to be a fire access road or emergency response access road to even, you know, get to these buildings, you know, build something out in the middle of a field, uh, it, it would be typical that we would wanna make sure that there is ability for us to get service to that location.
I think then what we would need to do, is that for all of the types, batteries, wind, and solar, or is that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Just went under a present, uh, under, sat through a presentation from DTE about their emergency response to wind turbines, and, you know, they send crews up inside where the generators are to service those, and they've had instances where those workers have gotten injured while up in there, or simply had a medical, had, had diabetic reaction or a heart attack or, or something, and had needed to be rescued and, and brought down, so there, there's definitely the need for.
In the emergency response plan, it says an identification of potential approach and departure routes to and from the facility for site, police, fire, ambulance, and other emergen- is that not?
No, I, I think that, I think that that's a, a direction on how to get there, it's, it's not, to me, it doesn't go far enough to say it, it needs to be an approved emergency access route, which, which would, you know, require it to be a certain width, and be able to maintain the weight of our trucks, and be not a hot old road that a fire truck's not gonna be able to, to trip over.
So, almost up to private road standards or something like that, then, so you, you don't get there and get stuck?
Right, you know, again, or, or NFPA has, has pretty clear fire access.
Okay.
Standards.
So, so chief, if we added, and this is a digestion to the Planning Commission, on page six, we added an item three above decommissioning, and renumbered decommissioning to number four, and then continued that, just to say approved emergency, approved emergency route, and then, um, there must be an approved emergency route.
Access.
Approved.
Emergency access route.
Emergency access route.
Where, I'm sorry, where are you proposing that?
Top of page six, under D, you would add an item three, approved access emergency route, there must be an approved emergency access route compliant with.
On page, am I looking at the same page here, page?
Six.
Have a, page six of, of which one, because I've got, I've got, I'm looking at page six that has page one down here.
I'm looking at the resolution, I'm sorry. So, you, you've got the, you've got the.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah.
I am two, and the one that's page six of the resolution, or the one that says page six down at the bottom of it. I guess we don't have one of those, they'll say page one at the bottom of it. So I guess I'm looking at the same place, I just don't understand how that fits in here.
So, there's item three de- decommissioning?
Yes.
I would change decommissioning to four, add an item three above that, that says approved access emergency route.
Gotcha.
There must be an approved emergency access route compliant with, what's the code? The one that we've cited throughout.
Eight fifty-five.
FDA, and approved by DFDA, approved by the fire department. I need that, and I'm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Would that work for the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Works for me. All right, anybody have anything else for the chief? Thank you. So I think it's gonna take a little work perhaps to get us where we're trying to go. I had just a couple of things, not really substantive, but necessarily, but, uh, a couple of things that I made notes of. If anybody else has anything, and you'd like to go first, please do it. Okay, I'll just jump in on, on page two, and this, I know this seems like a real technicality, but I, I think it's helpful if government is gonna do something, people don't have to go, you know, Google, uh, acronyms or abbreviations, and on page two, J, MET Tower, if we could spell out at least one time that that's Meteorological Evaluation Tower, then the problem for, uh, people who are really into grammar, I guess, would be that now we just called it Meteor- Meteorological Evaluation Tower, Tower, when we refer to it elsewhere as MET Tower. Okay, I'll, I'll acknowledge that that's goofy and probably, uh, out of, uh, what most people would be concerned about, but at least, at least in the definition.
So it reads Meteor- Meteorological Evaluation Tower, parentheses, MET Tower?
Yes, and for, yeah, parentheses, uh, M E T, therefore should all be capitalized. And then, I think the only other occurrence of, of that is in four, and it's okay to say at the table on page four, it's okay to say MET Tower, just like it is, recognizing that there is a redundant, or not, not acknowledging, I guess, that there's a redundancy in there. Decommissioning, I had a little bit of an issue with, although it was a comment tonight, why not remove everything, which I think, uh, some of us may have wanted early on, but whether or not it's, remove everything, take out what you, I think we had agreed on, on four feet being, uh, the minimum to retire, to return it back to its agricultural use. So as it's written, the issue I would have is this is decommissioning, which now has become four because we added a three, a different three, uh, A, the above, the ground must be restored to its original topography within three hundred sixty-five days of abandonment, all structures, concrete piping, facilities, and other project-related materials above grade, and any structures up to four feet below grade shall, shall be removed off site, off site for disposal. The way we use the word structures in the beginning of that sentence, uh, disregarding what the definition is in our zoning ordinance, we have separated structures as being different from concrete and piping and facilities, which occurs to me, we would need to be more explicit than just structures below grade that we want removed, it should also include, because that, that's above grade, and it seems like we should repeat some of that, all structures, concrete, piping, and I would include cabling uh, below grade, and I don't know if that's being overly picky, but I, I would like to not leave it up to too much interpretation. If we, if we explicitly state that this is the stuff above grade, and we want to accomplish that below grade, but we just call it structures and concrete and piping, scratch that, we just call it structures below grade, I'm not sure that is as tight as it ought to be. So that, if, if that's being too picky, I'm fine with that criticism.
Mr. Chair, it might shed some light on it, like, I can tell you out underneath the ground of Detroit Metro, sometimes under six, ten feet deep, you will get a duck bank that's six feet square for several hundred feet long.
Okay.
It's got cabling and piping in there, but it's a duck bank, which is a concrete box, basically.
Yeah, my, my preference would be, as someone commented tonight, if you put it in, and you're decommissioning, you take everything out. I don't want. I don't wanna rehash what we might have done a couple of months ago, but if what our consensus was that, well, our main goal is to return it to agricultural usage, so we're gonna go down four feet, just wanna make sure that everything, whether it is enumerated here or not, everything down to four feet is removed. And I think therefore there's a better way to, to say it maybe than...
Well...
List everything. And I think by virtue of listing everything, anything that's not listed, I guess, must be okay to keep there. And I don't think that was our intent.
I, I mean, when you say all structure, structures mean anything.
But why, why then?
I think what...
Does structure not mean anything above ground?
I think we could solve it by...
We call it structures, concrete, piping, and facilities.
All structures, including but not limited to concrete piping, facility, and any other project-related materials above grade, and...
Okay, then let's change that to everything you just stated, and where it says above grade and four feet below grade. And just knock out that other phrase.
And up to four feet below grade shall be removed. Off-site for disposal, okay.
Didn't we, uh, wasn't the state level like two foot or something? Wasn't it less and we made it more?
Seems like it was.
So that it could be farmable again?
We, we made it...
To the, to the public comment that was like, just make it...
Yeah.
I think that's why.
And then I also...
We wanna make it workable still.
I also consulted with some people in my office and somebody I knew who works in that industry, and they said that the reason for the four feet across the board is again to get back to that arable nature, and especially for wind, those, you think about the footers that have to be on that type of structure, those often go twenty to fifty feet deep. So, to have to, and, and they're quite, you know, when you think about the diameter of them, that would be quite a bit of material to haul out. So...
I would question whether or not that's our issue or not. You put it there, you take it back out of there.
And I had the same conversation with the, the township attorney, cause her instinct was to take it all out. So, I think she would support you if you wanted to take it all out, but again, I think, you know, you're looking at whether it's workable or not.
Yes, I think, I was just gonna say, I think it, it becomes a question of practicality, and if by doing that, did we just take our workable incompatible ordinance and really negate everything we were trying to accomplish because we pushed a little bit too much? All right, let me see if I have, uh, I think that, oh, no, I did have one more. On, on page eleven, and, and I apologize for some of the stuff that's been in there, and I didn't catch it earlier, but on page eleven, Q, decommissioning plan, Roman numeral two, the small i, i, the estimated cost of decommissioning, my issue with that is, estimated by whom? Estimated by the people that wanna put it in, or estimated by, you know, an independent...
That was in the lawyer's notes too, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. And then I think she...
I didn't remember that.
She said the same thing, where she recommended...
Okay, thank you.
Prepared by a third party.
Didn't bring it with me.
My reliable outside source or something.
I have it here, but her notes weren't in the part that I printed, so I just added them.
Yeah, I could've sworn I printed it out, but if I did, I didn't bring it with me.
Put it on my computer, but I can't get it on my computer.
A certified third-party estimate.
Yes, excellent.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yep, thank you. And, yeah, just to be clear, township attorney did give us an opinion on, on some of this. The opinion itself is, is, uh, what I wanna say, uh, I wanna say proprietary protected, privileged communication between the attorney and the township being the client. The content of it, I would not consider to be privileged in that manner, and in fact, we're going to incorporate it, as we just said, into the, the final product. So, there's nothing secretive about that. It's just the actual work product should not be disseminated, cause that is a privileged communication. Anybody else have anything? I wrote down some of this, but I did not get everything down or with the right wording. I think Megan, you probably do have all of that, don't you?
Um...
I've got, like, the general issues, but I, uh, somewhere along the line, I wasn't writing fast enough, so...
Sure.
If we do motion two, we've got adopt all comments by the township attorney, Dexter Area Fire Department inputs of ten twenty-four twenty-four, uh, add, add in the definitions, hybrid facility, black carding is required by DAFD, but I think maybe you had different terminology for that, and then I totally missed out on what the details were with access roads.
Um, so, I had accept all edits and comments from the township attorney, add the language from the DAFD email dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I thought, um, yeah, I'm sorry, I wrote that down wrong, yes.
It's okay.
Yeah, of course, I took the date that is up there, not the, yeah, it's the fifteenth. Thank you.
Change, um, item oh-five-oh-i, um, as discussed, and adding an item on a, item three, on approved access emergency route, and then change decommissioning item A as discussed. And then, and then I, I would add another one is to add a, a definition of a, do we have add a definition of a hybrid facility?
Yeah.
And that, okay.
Janice, I still didn't get all that down. Do you have, do you have that?
I don't have all of it. I was gonna listen to the, the livestream later and see if I get it.
Let me try again.
I started, I started losing it at the, you know, oh-five-oh-i, or whatever, I think is where I...
Add, add... And I, I can add a definition of a hybrid facility, accept all edits and comments from the township attorney, add the language from the DAFD email dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, change section oh, item five point zero point i, as discussed, and add an item three on approved access emergency route. And then change decommissioning item A as discussed. No problem.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the last one?
Change decommissioning item A as discussed. I didn't wanna say item three decommissioning, just say decommissioning because we're changing that number?
Okay. I'm sorry, for about the third time, it's oh...
So, it's oh...
Oh-five.
Oh-five, so it, it, it's on page...
Is that nine?
Page nine.
Yeah.
There's, it's under the fire response plan?
Yep.
And then it's to change that item four? Sorry, four, that should be item four. So, oh-five-oh, Roman numeral four, a description on materials and onsite protocol should be placard at location onsite to be approved by DAFD.
All right. Thank you. So, let me try to read this back. We don't, this is a little bit out of process, we don't have a motion on the floor, and it's not, uh, chairs roll off for the motion. I'm just trying to pull together what I think we just heard, which would be if we made motion two in our packet, one of our options. Based on the information provided by staff and during a public hearing held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission makes favorable recommendation of the proposed text amendment drafted by the planning commission after public hearing for section two point zero-two, article four, and article seventeen of the zoning ordinance to the township board for the following reasons. One, the zoning text amendment is compatible with goals and policies of the master plan. Two, the zoning text amendment is consistent with state and federal law. Text amendment drafted by the planning commission has the following changes. A, section five point zero-five is amended to add renewable energy facilities of special land use, accept all edits and comments by the township attorney, add the language in the Dexter Area Fire Department email of ten fifteen twenty-four. Oh-five-oh, Roman numeral four, black carding is required by DAFD, or do you need more of a description on that? Add, add an item of approved access emergency routes, and then, under decommissioning, item A as discussed.
And add a definition of a hybrid facility.
Thank you, you know, I had that and skipped it, yep.
What about the MET Tower?
Uh, that's almost a typo thing, you can just, I mean, it's not a typo typo, but it's not a substantive thing that changes anything we're doing, just, you know, it's just me. All right, if, if that was an accurate readback of what we just discussed, I would invite somebody to put that in form of a motion, move by Birch.
Second.
Is that by Abbott?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Birch, supported by Commissioner Abbott, all that stuff that I just read. Anybody need that? Most importantly, Janice, do you need that read back again?
Nope, I got it made.
Or at least you're gonna say that, just so I don't have to try to read it back again, and you're saving me the pain.
The motion is, that you read, and then I just had...
Most all of that.
Three, four, five, six.
Excellent. Excellent, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, a roll call, vote please. Uh, Hurd?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Birch?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor, it's crowd votes yes, so the vote is seven yes, no, no. And we have a third action item, which is what are we gonna do with our December twenty-sixth, uh, regularly planned meeting? We have a memo on that, and I guess while we're, while we're pulling that up, it is official that the December twenty-fourth meeting has been moved to December nineteenth, right?
Yes.
It appears, um, it actually appears in the approved calendar already. I think the only confusion was, is that that would be our normal, whatever we are, third Tuesday or whatever, but not only is it on the monthly calendar on the website, but it actually was adopted by the township board at the beginning, I think it goes by the beginning of the fiscal year, which already accounted for that. So, the annual meeting schedule shows planning commission December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. So, that one, that one is fine. As far as, uh, what we're gonna do with November twenty-sixth, that being Thanksgiving week, I think last time, uh, several of us maybe, enough to, to perhaps put a quorum at risk or totally, uh, totally invalidate the meeting. It seems as though we could not have it November twenty-sixth, and the proposal, I, I know, not sure I'd call it a proposal, but, uh, it has been cleared that we could do it the previous Thursday, which is November twenty-first. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Pardon me?
I'm just gonna be out of town.
Anybody else go off the top of their head of...
I'm available both dates, either one.
Yeah, I'm available on the twenty-sixth, just not the twenty-first.
I'm available both dates.
I don't think I'll be on the board. Right? Cause I'm not running for reelection. And I'm the trustee, so I, no input from this scene.
When does the...
When you say it's like the nineteenth...
The new board would be, would be sworn in by...
They'd be sworn in on the twentieth. Yeah, that by noon on the twentieth.
But...
The nineteenth of November is the last.
Board meeting?
Board meeting of the current...
Of the current board.
Right.
I will be here on the twenty-first, but gone the twenty-sixth.
That is interesting. Yeah, I, I could do the, I could do the twenty-first as far as I know, but could not do the twenty-sixth.
We also, um, you may wanna consider that we don't have any development proposals in at this time for you to hear. You postponed an action item tonight till February. You also then, um, made a recommendation on this, so unless the ORC has some things for the, that, you did, you, you did delay, you did postpone one item, auxiliary lots, that discussion to November, um, in terms of zoning ordinance and that, dealing with those. So, that would be the only reason to have the meeting.
As long as, as, uh, you don't need us to reconvene, although I guess if you did, we could figure out something else on a, on a special meeting basis. To clarify anything that we just did with renewable energy, it seems like we'd be okay without having a November meeting. Anybody have an opposing point of view?
All right. Megan, what did you say about postponing the issue that we postponed until November twenty-sixth?
Auxiliary?
Delayed?
Those was, it was a zoning ordinance discussion about auxiliary lots, um, and that were non-conformities, um, and so the language wasn't quite right, um, and you wanted to look at something else. And I think you, Janice, I don't know if you can check minutes to make sh, to see if they postponed it to that date or not. It was discussed in September.
Thank you.
That would be in September, probably.
I'm carrying around September.
So, those are those minutes that you have tonight?
It actually doesn't say, it says we postponed it, but it doesn't say to when.
Okay, so then you could, you don't have to do it in November.
All right, just to, uh, make it more official than whatever power you might think I have, would somebody, uh, like to make a motion that we cancel a little bit? Move by Driscoll, support?
Support.
By Hurd, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Oppose, no, motion carried. All right, it says here we have... All right, it says here we have no discussion items, which would bring us to approval of the minutes of the September 24th meeting. Which everybody should have in their packet. It was a little bit hard to find because it was just one sheet of paper this time. Anybody have any issues with minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2024 meeting, please.
Oh, move, Mayor.
Move by Mayor, support by Abbott. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion carried. Correspondents, I, I should have asked this when we were deliberating the short-term rental. But it would be good to get on the record. I think our zoning administrator has a tabulation of letters.
I do indeed. We received 11 comments by email, by mail, and a few people, you know, walked in and dropped off their comments, mostly regarding the short-term rental proposal. We, I did get one comment in favor of the, you know, the renewable energy amendment in a letter that was mostly about short-term rentals. Of them, eight were, eight were opposed. One was opposed but supported strict control if, you know, if, if the, if they are approved, and two were in favor. The, the reasons against approving them included, four, four people mentioned particularly disruption for residents with concerns including noise, increased tenant turnover, increased traffic, and decreased quality of life. Four people mentioned things that, that were sort of related to strains on infrastructure, including trash, lack of space for parking, inadequate emergency access, and increased need for enforcement of, of lake safety measures in particular. And decrease in safety, four people mentioned, mentioned those. Concerns include an increase in the presence of unknown people, potentially leading to increases in things like theft and trespassing and water accidents. Two people mentioned lack of enforcement capability at the township level, and two mentioned decrease in property values. Two people who were both owners of short-term rentals in other locations mentioned, you know, sort of hasty decision-making on the part of the township. And suggested that we need more time, we need more research, you know, on, on this topic. Reasons for included, you know, additional traffic for local business. There was a local business owner who said particularly that, that they, they benefit, you know, greatly immensely from, from visitor traffic with the short-term rentals that we have. There were a few considerations listed as well. Three people asked why short-term rentals are being proposed only for the lakes residential district and why not for additional, if not all, you know, districts in, in the, in the township that, that allow for residential uses. One mentioned using Hamburg Township's ordinance as a model, although the writer of that comment is opposed to having them. So if, if we do have them, then use Hamburg as a model, if that makes sense. And other questions about, you know, how they would be permitted first come, first served, and can associations, HOAs add caveats, you know, as well, or prohibit them. So that's pretty much a nutshell of the, of the almost dozen comments that we've received. And pretty much everything that, that we thought sort of had merit among their comments.
All right, thank you. Any of the correspondents that were aware of on anything? All right, brings us up to township board trustees updates, or anything?
No. We have an election in two weeks, approximately.
Yeah?
Two weeks.
Worked like that.
Today's Tuesday, right?
Mm-hmm.
In case anybody didn't know, there's an election in two weeks.
Yeah, I was wondering what all the errands signs were all over the place. I hadn't really put that together, though, I, I don't know.
And I believe early voting starts on Saturday. Not here, it's at Silver Township Hall.
I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna ask, yeah, early voting is over there again?
Yeah.
Early, yeah, in-person voting?
Other than that, I don't think there's any other topic. But that, that's partly why I didn't want to, actually, never mind, I'm not gonna say. The later it gets, the foggier my brain gets. No, I try to be concise. Obviously a problem.
Concerns of planning commission members, director of planning and zoning, township supervisor, recording secretary. Let us start over there with our zoning administrator.
Yes, there was one thing I forgot to mention regarding the, the planning and zoning department report for September. You know, mostly as presented, I did want to mention, however, for Hillside Acres, we did have four single-family homes only permit applications, and they have been approved at this point.
Okay, thank you. Planning consultant.
Yeah, Carlos, just congratulations on the hard work that you all did to build together that renewable energy ordinance.
Well, that one, I will say right back at you because you took, and I think the process got better as it went along, but initially, you know, we were, you know, we were pretty well
overwhelmed.
directionless, and, and, yeah, and, and between you and trustee Driscoll, you helped kind of bring some order to it, and then we got some better definition. But, yeah, it, it was like pushing a rope for a while. Really appreciate your, not only your efforts, but your expertise. Commissioner Mayor.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Abbott?
Nothing.
Commissioner Lewis?
Just a quick question, does Dexter Township contract with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
Are they authorized to issue zoning violations?
No.
Has there ever been discussion in doing so?
There has been some discussion of doing so, but from what I understand, the way that your police village was worded, it wouldn't allow for, so first of all, the Washtenaw County Sheriff doesn't do zoning enforcement. And so they've been asked, and they just simply, they'll do, that's not in their purview, they don't do it.
Actually, I misspoke. I was thinking in terms of the nuisance ordinance, noise, disruption. It goes back to the enforcement for short-term rental and what do you do on weekends and after hours, kind of thing.
So often with short-term rentals, the problem is that a crowd of people needs to be dispersed, and they're on private property, and they've rented that private property. So if the owner or the agent who's in charge of that property is not there to authorize the officers to remove those folks, that's where you, that's, that's where it gets into, that's when their ability to enforce, enforce becomes problematic. And that's the reason to have the agent listed and that they have to be within a 45-minute drive. And that's pretty standard in a lot of short-term rental ordinances. So that's one. Two, but in terms of enforcing the ordinances and noticing violations and then taking people to court, often that is not the police. You need a code enforcement officer to do that, and that's kind of a three-part thing. You need an ordinance that is clear and enforceable. You need a code enforcement officer who can go out and do those and respond to those. That's a tough job to fill, lots of municipalities are struggling with it. And then third, you need to have your township attorney involved so that they can, when push comes to shove and it needs to go to court, they represent you there. I, I'm sorry to answer that in a complicated manner.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else? Commissioner Birch?
Nothing.
Commissioner trustee Driscoll?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hurd?
Oh, wait, this may be my last meeting, because I think if we're not meeting in November before that, 18. So I'd just like to say it's been an honor serving with all of you, and I think you're very thorough and very detail-oriented, and you come very prepared. And I've been on a lot of planning commission meetings over 20 years, so I can tell you that I appreciate all the work you do.
Well, thank you. You know, personally, I will certainly, I will state that I certainly appreciate your inputs and your perspective on things. And I think you've had a very productive time on, on planning commission. We're gonna miss you, or those of us who are left, will miss you.
I may come from the other side sometime.
That would be good, yeah.
Commissioner Hurd?
I have nothing.
And our recording secretary.
I want to make a note that comments tonight on the short-term rental, one hour and 15 minutes. That's what made our meeting go until 9:45.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is certainly one of the later meetings that we've had, but I appreciate that everyone came out. We got a diversity of opinions, and, and not that anybody cares to hear from me anymore tonight, but I, I was a bit surprised by that, that we're kind of evenly weighted. It's interesting, and I think we have a process, somebody has a process ahead of them to get where we need to, to be with this. But I, I may have labored it a little bit much, but my years of experience way long ago are that, that people take the opportunity to come speak to their government. The very least we can do is listen to every last word that they have to say. And it was, you know, it was a good, good group, good comments.
And most everybody stuck to the five minutes. There were a couple that were like three and four minutes, but I think there was only two that went over the five minutes. And you probably made that.
With that, our second public comment, anybody care to address this about anything at all? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Future agenda items, I think beyond what we've already spoken about, there's nothing listed here. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Move by Driscoll?
Second.
Support by Abbott? All those, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no, motion carried, meeting is adjourned. Your last official act. Thank you, everyone, yeah, yeah, last official act.
Thanks for letting me adjourn.